Hi Janelle.
Hi.
How are you today?
I'm sorry.
That's all right, how are you?
I'm okay, how are you?
Okay, I was just going over Glenn's comments. I was literally shutting down when they came in. So I was glad you had time to read and respond because you were fast.
Yeah, I saw them come in and it's like, okay, I'm on top of that.
I was grateful for that.
Hello again.
Hello. Hi, how are you?
Hanging in there. Over in city, unbelievable. And you know, if this goes much longer, I think we're gonna all have to get some padded rooms someplace to bounce off of.
A room where you can like break things, like you know, China or you know, just good stress reliever. I had somebody mention that, I'm like, I like that idea.
A 20-year-old breaks things without trying. It's a challenge for him to do the dishes without breaking something. Hi Melanie.
Hello, how are you?
We're all here.
Hey, how are you?
There's a bearded Johnny coming on. Hi John.
Hey, hello everybody.
How are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Hanging in.
Your shirt and that background are like a psychological test. Trying to keep us on our toes, John.
Saying about yourself, yeah.
Joe, how are you?
I'm invisible, I think, I can't see me, can you see me?
No, hit start video.
Lower left.
There we go.
There you are.
Go back, I don't want to see it, go back. Hi Mark.
Hi.
Mark.
There he is.
Do we have any non-members in the audience, Janelle?
We have 11 people joining in today. One of them is Charlie, we also have Robin and Brent from GMB, they're also joining us.
Nice.
And then we do have definitely members of the public.
Hi Tom.
Excellent.
Hello.
How are you?
Not bad, how are you all?
Okay.
So we're missing two members, here comes Tom.
Yep.
Hi Glenn, hi Tom. Tom, you've never looked better.
Hey everybody.
I'm your mutant.
Never sounded better either.
Wow.
Keep piling on, let's keep piling on.
This place is rough.
I haven't heard from Sumner, is he expected, do you know, anybody know?
I have not heard from him.
I haven't heard from him.
Well, with your permission, let's get started on the public meeting unless anybody objects, maybe he'll catch up with us by the time we get to the regular meeting. It is 6 o'clock on Wednesday, the 19th of August, and we have a public meeting about to commence with new business being the presentation, discussion, and public meeting of the floodplain bill ordinance, which has been out for public comment, copy of which was on the website. And Janelle, what's the latest count on comments?
It was the one that was on the website.
Yeah, one early on, that's it, right?
Correct.
Welcome Bonnie, there's Sumner. Is Jackie on, is she recording?
Yes, she's on.
Okay, hi Jackie. All right, Melanie, do you want to give us a little bit of background on this and then we'll open it up for comments, questions? If any member of the public wants to offer a comment, they can do it with a Q&amp;A or a chat, and Janelle will help us understand what your questions are. But the subcommittee consisting of Joe Hockner and Melanie Mosier have spent considerable time working on this. There's a wide range of opinions about some matters, but I'm gonna turn it over to the chair to take us through it and then we'll try and respond to questions.
Okay, Janelle, could you put up the PowerPoint?
Doing it now. All right.
Great, okay, next slide please. Okay, there were several prompts for us to look at the floodplain regulations, one of which dates all the way back to the comprehensive plan. And the policies and recommendations included as feasible plans, processes, and projects to mitigate the effects of flooding. So that was one of them, and then the 2013 Quinn report recommended revisions to the city code that would prohibit fill buildings and outdoor storage of materials in the 100-year floodplain. And then more recently, the 2019 floodplain study did report that there is a rise in floodplain levels related to new developments. So we know that filling the floodplain is predicted to rise, to raise the floodplain levels. Next slide please. So our assumptions are that the community is at risk from flood damage, storms are becoming more frequent and more severe. Nearly all floodplain fill activities create negative consequences to adjacent areas. Natural floodplain areas store and dissipate floodwaters, which is an extremely valuable function for the city. And finally, development in the floodplain obstructs or displaces areas needed for flood storage. Next slide. So this is an illustration of how floodplain can make things worse. So the upper sketch shows a house on a floodplain area. And then we see that across, there is fill added and new homes, and what's happened? The floodplain has been displaced, and so when things flood, the water gets higher than it had previously. So the cumulative effect is increased flooding. Okay, next slide. So the existing regulation does not prohibit floodplain fill if it's permitted by FEMA, that's the Federal Emergency Management Organization. And generally, they approve any fill that's less than one foot, that's my understanding, okay? So consequently, when a floodplain fill is permitted by FEMA, there is no recognition nor mitigation of the cumulative effects and adverse impacts and future damage to existing properties and public infrastructure. Next slide please. So our intent is to provide a higher level of protection of floodplains to prevent increased flooding now and in the future. Okay, second point is that development should occur in a manner that does not pass the impacts and costs of flooding onto other properties and future generations. And the third point is Lewis must be more proactive in reducing and preventing floodplain problems. Okay, next slide please. So our proposed standard would be no net loss of floodplain. Any reduction of or adverse impact to floodplain storage caused by development such as flooding must be mitigated on the site or in the immediate community. Next slide please. So this slide indicates how that would occur. If there is fill such as is shown on the left-hand side, then there must be a subsequent replacement of that floodplain storage area by removal of material on the other side. Okay, next slide please. So our proposed revision is that fill within the special flood hazard area shall result in no net loss of natural floodplain storage or increase in water surface elevation during the base flood. A report documenting this condition shall be submitted as part of the preliminary plan subdivision process. We don't want to wait until final plan to discover there's a problem. So we want to make sure there's a balance at preliminary plan stage. The report shall be created by a qualified professional, shall include the existing and proposed floodplain storage capacity, and shall document that the completed development will meet or exceed the existing floodplain storage capacity at or adjacent to the development site. So this doesn't say that you cannot fill the floodplain, it just says if you do, you have to mitigate for it. Next slide please. So the anticipated benefits are to prevent flood levels from increasing with consequent property damages and prevent flood levels from damaging public infrastructure with consequent cost to citizens. And next slide please. So all of this wasn't, didn't come freely out of my, our brains. We did take guidance from the Guide for Higher Standards in Floodplain Management, the No Adverse Impact Toolkit, which was prepared by the Association of Floodplain Managers in 2013. And that concludes my, my presentation.
The question I have immediately is, what has FEMA done with this? Has FEMA accepted this seven-year-old document and included that in the regulations, or it's just out there floating?
Well, my understanding is that regulations must comply with FEMA at a minimum. This exceeds FEMA. I don't believe that FEMA would have any interest in, in what we're proposing here, because it's stricter than their regulations.
Because my conversations with Robin is that any changes, Janelle might confirm this, to our floodplain ordinance has to be reviewed and approved by FEMA. And we have so much different mention of fill already contradictory in our floodplain ordinance. This would add to the confusion of more, more fill in the floodplain, or less, and you know, we'd have to have FEMA approve this.
Well, I think, Joe, that, that we do have to go through the regulations with a fine-tooth comb and see where, what else, you know, what's contradictory and, and fix that. So we're not done, we're just, at this point, I think, addressing the most important issue, which is fill.
So we've got a couple of questions coming in. One is, will this apply to both coastal and inland floodplains, example freshwater creek floodplains? Yes, this would apply to all floodplains, but specifically for new major subdivisions. The way the ordinance was written, it's for major subdivisions, so if you already have a house, it's not for redevelopment, this is new subdivisions. And then the second question, will this help our FEMA rating? That I'm not sure about, Robin is on the line, but it might, I know, we just went through that system and my understanding is we were successful in getting the number to come down, which is the better thing. So this might help in the future, in another five years, when we go back through that recertification.
Great, that's an added benefit I didn't think of.
I'm not saying it will, but it could potentially have some effect.
Right.
Glenn, are you on the process for FEMA reviewing an ordinance like this?
It's the same process as when we adopted the initial floodplain, so yeah, you do submit it, you do submit it to them, they do it. It's, but it's not a major hurdle to get through, it's routinely done.
Hey Glenn, quick question for you, is, is, and it's related to the pending ordinance doctrine. Can Lewis begin to, if this is adopted, can Lewis begin to apply this prior to FEMA approval? Because there's no way of knowing when that might occur.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the floodplain regs, the answer is yes, the floodplain regs are part of the zoning code if I remember correctly in.
It is.
Yeah, so, so yes, once it's adopted by city council, or even once it's introduced at, at city council, I think that pending ordinance doctrine is applicable and, and play while you go through the FEMA approval process.
And just for everybody's clarification, there was a much larger discussion about, a bigger topic about taking on the floodplain regulations, doing a holistic review. That would definitely require FEMA, DEMA, potentially a consultant, a lot of, a lot of heavy lifting in that one. This one, I'm not so sure needs to go through FEMA or FEMA for an official review. The much larger review that had been discussed definitely needs that, because that would have been a potential rewrite of the floodplain regulations.
Right.
But I believe this small little adjustment, making something more strict, should be perfectly fine. We also got another question, does this anticipate global warming floodplain, future floodplain levels?
No. No, we, floodplain levels are established by FEMA or the engineer of the major subdivision and, you know, we don't have any control on that.
But what this would do is if the floodplain changes in the future, this ordinance would still be impacted. It would impact those, any changes in the floodplain in the future.
Right.
However, we do have the Sea Level Rise Committee, which is looking at climate change and would piggyback on what the fill ordinance is doing.
Yes, there's many different things going on that will all interconnect in our, if approved, would be beneficial to the environmental aspects of the city.
I'm sorry?
I'm just asking, Janelle, any other public comments or questions?
Those are the only three I have so far.
Sorry, Sumner, you were gonna ask something?
Yeah, just the, reading through the, the draft that you sent, it seems like there's the potential for different ways of making reports to sort of say, oh yeah, we're sure, it's gonna work out fine. How do we make sure that in fact, things will work according to that graphic that you had with what I call sort of a cut and fill? If I'm gonna fill over here, I'm gonna have to cut an equal volume of material somewhere else. How do we, who evaluates that, how does that happen? How do we make sure that things work out the way people say they're gonna work out?
Well, I think it's part of the engineering plan and, and you know, my assumption is that the engineers are doing things correctly and legally. So we have to depend on their word that things are as, as they're stating. And certainly they'll go through a review by our engineers and I would assume sediment control people, so.
Yes, this will go through a review by the city engineer of the Sussex Conservation District, and of course, the final plans will be signed and sealed by a licensed engineer in the state of Delaware.
Could I ask a question related to that? Just a suggestion on the way the draft ordinance language is written, is that we might want to say that, where it says the report shall be created, a report documenting this condition shall be submitted as part of the preliminary subdivision process. I think we should say submitted by who?
That's by the applicant.
No, I know that, it doesn't say that. And the other, the other question I had was, there's a requirement to be a qualified professional. Implicit in that, and I think is, is the assumption that the planning commission can look at, you know, if someone comes forward whose credentials are not acceptable for the purpose of providing this report, that the planning commission could reject that report because it did not satisfy this qualified professional standard. So I'm just saying, I think it should be explicit that the report is not something the city has to provide, it's, I think it's, it's implied here, I just suggest to make it explicit.
Would suffice Bonnie.
Beg pardon?
So the third line would just simply say submitted by the applicant as part of the preliminary subdivision process?
Yeah, maybe, a report documenting this condition shall be submitted, carried in by the applicant as part of the preliminary process. You know, I would also just boot, I mean, belt and suspenders, I'd also say, and 90 days prior to the, the public hearing or 30 days prior to the public hearing before.
So my anticipation was, it was coming in with the application, because if it doesn't come in with the application, it's not a complete application.
And then I, again, I would make that explicit, since we've had, as, as we all know, we've had some go-rounds with various applicants about what is and is not expected at the preliminary consent stage or with an application. So my only suggestion is, let's, we have the opportunity to, to button this down, why not do it?
Glenn, what would you say?
I, I agree with Bonnie, maybe what we should do is, we have the list of things that are required for a complete application. Maybe in that list, the.
Cross-reference.
Be included, and that would tie directly in rather than it being in another paragraph.
We can amend 170 and 197 to reference the item that needs to be required.
The, the, the other question I have is, we say by a qualified engineer, qualified.
Professional.
Professional.
We don't define what qualified is, and as opposed to like a wetland delineation, it's someone who's qualified in wetland delineation. Should we, I mean, it could be a lot of debate as to who's qualified to submit that report.
So this is where we got into, what is qualified professional, and that's actually what somebody asked, is how do we, what is a qualified professional and how is it defined? Typically, you know, because we've had this in the wetlands certification buffer issue, is that you can be really good at your job, but there's no, there's no certification for, to be a wetland scientist. You can get that, and some places do have it, but there isn't, you know, like you don't get your professional regulation license like you do for an engineer. Typically, we're expecting these to come from an engineer or a wetland scientist, and again, it would allow the commission, if they don't, if they have questions and concerns, to have it sent off to be reviewed, and if the engineer has concerns with it, or if you, if you reject it, you have the ability to reject it and say, come back again. We also got another question, did you take infiltration into consideration?
No, infiltration has to do with stormwater management practices, and I don't believe it has anything to do with floodplain.
In fact, a qualified professional, if I can real quick, we can also, you know, somebody could be a certified floodplain manager, and they might be able to provide the information as to whether or not it's net neutral as well.
But Tom, Penette, I think what you're asking is, it should be submitted by a professional engineer, but that doesn't mean he can't use some of the other talent that Janelle was discussing, but a professional engineer has to sign off on it, is that what you're seeking?
Well, the problem is, is that a qualified engineer falls to his industry. So a person who signs off because for a mechanical, there's the American Society of Mechanical Engineers, or American Society of Civil Engineers, or American Society of Nuclear Engineers, that provides the basis for the qualification. Your license is by the state, but your license doesn't limit you to only signing one area. However, the liability you're taking on is based upon your industry. And I'm not sure from the discussion, if there is an industry or a state standard that the person is qualified to. And that's why I think this kinds of wind, this one being a little bit of a gray area, you know, is Joe Blow the ragman qualified to submit a cut and fill report for floodplain protection?
What would you suggest?
I don't know what the answer is, I'm just wondering, you know, we start throwing the word qualified around, and it, it seems to me it's a, it's a little bit of a gray area.
Well, I think what you guys can do is, if an application comes in and you're not sure, you can ask, it's like, what makes you qualified to submit this report? And they can go, well, I've been doing this for 30 years, or you know, or I just started like two weeks ago, you know, and you can ask for, you know, references and additional information. Typically, they're gonna, I mean, they're gonna come from a regulatory source, and again, these plans still have to go through the conservation district for review and approval. So they'll have to go through that. Now, we got a couple more questions. One was, it's more of a question in the statement, after construction, there needs to be inspections to ensure that system is doing what it's supposed to do. Is there procedure in place for such inspections that could be applied to this? I think you're more talking about your stormwater management, and there are inspections that the conservation does require, and they actually require that as stormwater management is constructed and after it's constructed. And typically, you want to make sure you're looking at that. And then the next one is regarding infiltration, if the replacement area is clay or rock, the time for the floodwaters to receive will increase, so does this have an impact?
Could you repeat that?
That's basically related to the infiltration question a minute ago.
Right, and this is not addressing infiltration, this is just looking at flood, flood areas. Because.
Charlie is listening in?
Charlie and Brent are both listening in.
Do they have a comment on the qualified professional engineer or otherwise, what they would recommend?
I don't have anything yet, but I'm gonna give them a minute.
So Janelle, there, there was a question on the public comment thing for the announcement for this part of the meeting from Danielle, has that been answered?
No, that was.
In front of me.
That's for you guys to, to determine what you'd like to do with that. Let me.
One thing we talked about, adding this to the subdivision ordinance for applications, there's also an application checklist on the online form, Janelle, so if this goes through.
We'll update that as well.
Now, can you refresh everyone's recollection on Danielle's question?
Yes, her only suggestion is to base no net loss on present plus future sea level rise conditions under a specified sea level threshold versus basing it on only present conditions. And I think that one's.
So far.
Gonna get interesting because the Sea Level Rise Subcommittee is still working out what threshold to use. I think we're close, but.
Well, but I think, so, somebody, somebody asked a question earlier about this, it seems to me that if we get this concept of no net loss of storage capacity in the, in the channel, whatever you want to call it, it should apply no matter what the water level is. Am I reading that right?
Yes.
Yes.
So as the sea level rises, the situation still remains.
Right.
Well, I, I think, I think what Danielle's point is there, is area that is outside of the 100-year floodplain now with sea level rise may be in it, and since you feel outside of the floodplain now, when level comes up, you've lost that as surge volume in the future.
So you're saying if I, if I put a bunch of fill above the floodplain, that would violate this principle. It wouldn't look bad right now because it's out of the floodplain, but once the floodplain comes up, it will, it will be an issue, yeah.
I think that's what Danielle was trying to get at.
That's a really good point.
And again, if the floodplain changes over time, we'll get new FEMA maps. And again, if the floodplain changes over time, we'll get new FEMA maps, this ordinance will apply to those areas. Just got another comment question. The graphic shown in the presentation that showed a bulldozer on one side of the site. Suggested that fill was being moved from one side of the site to another. Is this graphic meant to suggest that no fill? Would be trucked onto the site?
There's, there's no discussion in the proposal on where the fill will come from. It could be, we certainly prefer upsite to balance, which means that any cut is used for fill and vice versa. But we have no controls on that and that's really outside the scope of the floodplain committee right now.
So, so I'm, I'm now, I've now come around to Danielle's question. The, the problem with, with, you know, doing this film now based on where the floodplain is and, and, you know. Sort of violating the principles of this draft ordinance by putting things outside of the current floodplain is that yes, we can predict. And I'm going to say this later on again, we can predict that water will rise and that, you know, that floodplain will, will come up. Where we can, we should be. We should be designing for that higher level of water and the higher floodplain. Now, otherwise, basically, we're, we're, we're saying, okay, it's okay for you to build up there. And it'll just be too bad when, when the water comes up and, and, you know, it's, it's a lost opportunity. I guess we just, just have to let it be. That doesn't seem right. We should figure out a way to.
So I think that's actually really what the sea level rise subcommittee is looking at because as we've discussed there. Where the sea level rise is going to be impacted is in the floodplain area. So I think this actually helps. It's an extra step and an extra level of protection when we add that sea level rise. When we add, if the buffers get approved and this gets approved and the sea level gets approved, we have multiple levels of protection for that land. Another question, has any legal opinion been rendered on adverse commendation condemnation? Potential litigation and then they have a follow up question, but I don't have a follow up question yet.
Adverse condemnation, I'm not, this isn't a taking of any sort. This is, this is really just a, a fill ordinance. I don't, I don't see how condemnation really comes into play.
Okay.
But going back to, Janelle, your comment and Sumner's. I, I, I agree that this is stepwise getting us there. However, what we're looking at, as you know, in sea level rise is really. Where the first floor of the houses can be placed relative to sea level rise. We're not addressing anything at this point relative. Flood storage or flood retention. And maybe it's the next step down the line. Because we need to get to piecemeal, but I, I don't think what we were doing in sea level rise addresses. The concern about flood storage in, in the era of sea level rise.
No, I'm just saying it's, it's.
No, I know you weren't. I just wanted to make sure that everyone else understood that.
I'm just imagining and I can't, I, I, I don't think I can work this out right now, but I'm just imagining a situation where I'm a. I'm designing a development in a major subdivision and based on this draft ordinance. I will put all of my fill up out of the floodplain, the current floodplain. And it'll meet the letter of the law, but in thirty years. The floodplain may very well be higher and it won't meet the, I mean, we can tell that now. That it won't meet the floodplain, it won't meet this ordinance at that point. I, I just. I think, I think it, it sets us up for just pushing fill to another place higher in a site. Which right now is okay, but we know will ultimately not be okay.
Did everyone see Anne Marie's comment? Glenn, I guess it in part is for you to respond to.
I didn't see it. What did she say?
This section of code is specific to the FEMA floodplain. I'm not sure that you can expand it beyond this provision. That is going into this section of code. I think we're getting the sea level rise and the floodplain. Well, they will work together. I think right now we just, because. The one thing we haven't gotten to in sea level rise is new development. That is actually the next big project. Which will actually really tie into what we're doing here. And then we got one more comment that says, I agree that this needs to be built to a future sea level number agreed upon. Otherwise, it will be a net loss even with this ordinance change. And then please comment on your view of U D C grant presenters who. State that there should be no alteration to the existing floodplain.
Good luck with that.
Well, no, that's, that's, that's Danielle. I mean, that's, that's basically what Danielle asked.
I'm not sure. I. I see. Connection, U D C says the floodplain should not be disturbed, basically, right? Is that what?
That secret crew. And she has, when she's, when she was in at least one of our water, our. You know, water resource discussions, she made this point about no net. Loss of the floodplain. So I'm, I'm assuming that's what Janice is referring to here, but I'm not sure.
If you go with no loss in a floodplain, that's where Glenn gets involved because you're literally taking somebody's property. If they can't build upon their property, which happens to be in floodplain or in a future floodplain, that would be a taking.
It's gotta be to the extent that it takes all usable value out of the property. So I think there are very few instances in the city where. You know, we have to look at everyone individually, but I think there's very few instances where you'd say this ordinance is going to literally take away all usable value of the property.
Okay. So we got one more comment, but it's gonna, it actually pertains to a specific site where there's wetlands. So I'm, and it, it's there for people, there, but it really is not pertaining to flood, fill in the floodplain. That's specific with regarding to a wetland buffer setback. So that's it. That was a different. Project and that'll be discussed later on as part of the regular meeting. Because what we're talking about is whether or not there should be fill in the floodplain and if we're going to allow it, then it's no net loss. No net loss and then you have to provide a report verifying that there will be no net loss of flood, of fill in the floodplain or flood, yes.
So being sensitive to Anne Marie's. Warning about our reference to the FEMA floodplain. I'm just wondering if there's a way, some sort of. Phrase that we can insert here and I would also suggest that we'd be inserting it in the wetland thing later on. That recognizes that sea level rise will change things. I don't pretend to have the language now. It just seems to me like we should be doing something like that. Here as well as in wetlands.
Okay, it, it seems to me that the committee has heard, the subcommittee has heard four or five key points that need further investigation. Both in relation to what Sumner just said about sea level rise. Glenn about the regulations and the applicability of FEMA and our ordinance and how we might add flexibility. We have the standard of the professional, whether it's a qualified professional, professional engineer, whatever. Bonnie's suggestion about emphasizing the applicant is the submitter. So it seems to me we need to, to return this to the subcommittee. Come back to us with some additional changes or options at our next meeting, which is September sixteenth.
Okay.
Does that seem reasonable to everybody?
This be the way to go.
Okay, unless there's objection, I'm going to close the public meeting on the. Floodplain fill and I'm going to now open the regular monthly meeting of the planning commission. The agenda has been published since August eleventh. It is a healthy agenda. And I have one announcement before we move into new business. The one announcement is to clarify or, or reiterate what the mayor said at the last mayor and city council meeting. That FEMA did eventually complete the CRS review, which has resulted in the rating lowering or raising, as the case may be. From a nine to an eight, which next year should result in a ten percent flood insurance policy adjustment. On behalf of those of us who have flood insurance. So that apparently took a number of years, but it was just recently returned to the city, which has some material effect. Financial effect for all of us who have flood insurance. Bonnie, is there anything else you wanted to add to that?
I would just add my thanks and I hopefully all citizens' thanks to Robin and to Henry and Anne Marie and Janelle. For finally bringing this home. It's been a long involved process involving an awful lot of. Requests for information from FEMA and a lot of diligence and persistence. But we finally got it lowered five percent and that's, that's good now. And anyone, by the way, anyone who is curious about how these things are set, you can go online and look at the FEMA point system. For lack of a better way to put it, about how they assign. Points or grades. And those grades are what go into what your CRS rating is going to be. And it's, it's actually kind of interesting reading. To see where FEMA awards the grade points. I mean, things like. I don't remember what the technical word for it is, but Seagate will give you a, a lot of points. But it's, it's generally, it's the very high infrastructure cost. Things, even assuming they're technologically feasible, that, that will lower your, your rate. So. We're working, we're working in the range of the possible and Robin and at all finally made it happen.
Our, all of our thanks to all those who contributed to that.
Yeah, just a note for Drew. Drew, I have flood insurance and I don't get a discount because I'm not in the flood zone. The flood zone is two houses away, but I just have flood insurance for protection. And I'm not qualified because I'm not in the flood zone. So it's not everybody gets a discount.
All right, moving ahead to item B, new business. B one is reorganization. Before, as required by article four of our bylaws, we have to elect officers at the first meeting after. The mayor and city council meet following an election. However, there is one other announcement that, that precedes our reorganization and I'm going to turn to Commissioner Harris for that.
Thank you. I'm going to try to read this statement. Drew, I just sent you a revised standard version. Okay, good. Just a few moments ago, because I made a mistake in the earlier one. Okay, great. I'd like to make a statement at this point. After consultation with the mayor and Mr. McKay, the chair of the commission, I'm resigning as a member of the Lewis Planning Commission. As you know, I'm the chair of the Lewis Board of Ethics and have been for some time. I think now about nine years. Until recently, the Board of Ethics had seldom been called upon to act on specific charges or concerns. We would go sometimes for several years without a single matter to consider. In the past two years, however, several complaints have been presented and acted on and one advisory opinion has been given. And these have all involved issues related to members of the Planning Commission or the Mayor and City Council. And there's every indication that these two groups will be, continue to be the focus of concerns. The Code of Ethics states that no member of the Board of Ethics can either be mayor or councilperson. Thank God, incidentally, I don't have to be either one of those, but. Further, members who are candidates for election to either office must recuse themselves entirely from the work of the Board of Ethics. While they're standing for election. And I think those are wise and useful restrictions. I believe that those restrictions need to apply to membership on the Board of Ethics. And membership on several major committees or commissions of the city. In particular, the Lewis Planning Commission, the Finance Committee and the Historic Preservation Architectural Review Committees. These three constitute the most likely source for ethical complaint, primarily because they all involve financial interests and property issues. I recommend that no member of the Board of Ethics be a member of any of these committees. I believe my resignation is in the best interest of the city of Lewis. I'm proud to be part of what I've, I'm proud of the part I've been able to play in the ongoing work of the Lewis, Lewis Planning Commission. One of the great strengths of this sort of civic engagement is to see how a diverse group of talented and committed people. Can make collective decisions in the service of the city. I'm sure that the person next appointed will also find it a fulfilling assignment. I take comfort and draw strength from the careful and detailed processes by which we on the Lewis Planning Commission make decisions. And I appreciate the guidance offered by the Chair, Mr. McKay, and the deep commitment to good governance by the members of this commission. Thank you. That letter is given to Drew and will become part of the record.
And Mark, on behalf of all your fellow commissioners, we are sincerely sorry to see you go. You have enjoyed and benefited from your participation throughout your time on the commission. We know you'll be a good neighbor and perhaps we'll run across paths again in a semi official capacity, hopefully not as Chair of the Ethics Committee. But we understand you're setting a new standard of higher ethics for the city. We appreciate your taking this step. We commend you for it and we respect you for it, notwithstanding the fact that it's our loss and your gain. So we wish you Godspeed.
Thanks.
That the future is not as burdened as you fear on the Ethics Committee.
I presume that I'll be able to continue to be as opinionated as I already am.
We would, we would encourage that.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll leave the meeting now. Thank you.
All right, now we move on to the election of officers and I'm going to turn the meeting over to our vice chair while we start the election process.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take nominations for the position of chairman. And hearing none, I would like to nominate Drew McKay to continue to be our chairman.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any other nominations? Then the nomination period is closed. Have a motion to. Have a motion regarding Drew as continuing as chairman.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, what? I didn't hear that.
So you're wishing.
We have a motion, we have a motion that Drew McKay continue as our chairman. By Joe Hotchner. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Drew, I think you're chairman again.
Thank you, Kay, and thank you commissioners. That only ensures that the rest of you are going to get a lot more work to do. Moving on to vice chair, we need, we, we need to elect a vice chair. The chair is open to receiving nominations.
I would like to nominate Kay Carnahan for vice chair.
John, you second it? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of Kay continuing as vice chair, say aye. Close. Kay, you can't vote against yourself. You gotta say yeah.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all. Now for the position of secretary, the successor to Mark, the chair will accept nominations.
I would like to nominate Melanie Moser.
Is there a second? John or Joe second it? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Congratulations, Melanie, and thank you for volunteering to serve.
Thank you.
All right, we are now ready unless there's any other reorganization issues to move on to item B two. Discussion and possible action on a waiver request or relief from construction material type. For storm drains in the open space portions of the Lewis Waterfront Preserve subdivision. We had attached to the agenda, the original request by their engineer and the summary response from Janelle. Are there questions for? Are there questions for our engineer? I'm not sure if Glenn, Brian, whoever, Charlie, whoever worked on it. But are there questions before we take this matter up?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recuse myself from this and the next item on the agenda, so I will not participate in either of those two items.
Understand, thank you. Are there questions?
Question for Janelle. How has BPW responded to this request? What's their opinion?
The BPW response is in the memo from me. They, it was combined with the city engineer. They discussed it together.
Okay.
Where's the memo from you?
If you looked on the agenda, it was, on the link, it was, it was, and the link went to the waiver request and then the second page was my memo.
Oh, I didn't see that, okay.
So, wanted to share my screen? I've got it.
No, I got it, I got it.
Okay.
Does everybody have it? Anybody doesn't have it, then we need to share the screen, which we can do.
Yeah, why don't we share the screen? I didn't see it.
Okay.
Okay, give me just a minute.
Oh, so that answers the question I was going to ask the engineers on, online, so, okay.
So originally, the request for, let's make sure I have them in the right order, is the construction material and the second page was the memo from myself. Charlie, along with the Board of Public Works, reviewed the request and for the request for the construction material, they are recommending denial of that request because they have had unacceptable experiences with it and other development products within the city.
So to clarify.
I have, is that?
This material has a tendency to float to the surface. This was the material that was used on the tack stitch and subsequently had to be removed and replaced. And without adequate cover and adequate anchoring, BPW considered this to be an acceptable substitute.
Yeah, that site was about two blocks from my house and it looked like this big slinky was coming up out of the soil. But that's because the coverage there was minimal. I mean, depends on the site and how deep the new pipe will be. I mean, there's got to be other conditions that will affect this use. I mean, nobody, nobody's going to raise reinforced concrete pipe. I mean, it weighs a ton. But this plastic pipe, I will call it plastic HDPE, is flexible and fairly easy to handle, but it just has to be deep enough and have enough coverage to keep it down in place. Do we know where it's going to be exactly used, Janelle?
So this request was for the area within the open space. Let me just make sure I see it. Yeah, it would be within the open space portions of the site. That is where they were planning on using that.
And it'll be running under the access roads and things, so.
So if they're using it for storm drains, it may not be in the, in the roads. It might be in other locations. I'm going to see if Charlie or Brent can answer that question.
Parallel to the roads.
So.
Are they there?
All right, Charlie, you should be able to talk.
Okay. No, I mean, this request is not for under the roads, but in open space. But it's in areas where the actual cover begins to get less and the groundwater rises because we're talking about the pipe sections that are leading towards the stormwater management pond generally. I mean, there are some other open space locations.
Joe, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess they're looking for a blanket approval for replacement.
No, they're just looking for it in the open space. We've made it clear that we don't want it under the roads for structural reasons, but the board isn't, and neither am I, comfortable with it even in the open space, given the issues we've had with it in the past.
Rising. Okay, that's good. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Charlie? Do we have a motion then, if there's no further discussion?
I move that we deny-
Motion to?
Go ahead, Melanie.
Okay, I move that we deny the waiver request for the storm drain pipe material based on recommendations from our engineers.
That's a motion to recommend denial, right? The ultimate vote is city council.
Correct.
I second it.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion to recommend to mayor and city council denial of the waiver request is unanimously approved. Moving on to item number three. Discussion and possible action on a waiver request for relief from the 0.5% pipe slope of the storm drains in the Lewis Waterfront Preserve subdivision. This is waiver request two on the agenda. Again, there was an attachment which included the request from their engineer and Janelle's response. Janelle, do you want to put it up again, please?
Yes, it's on the screen and the city engineer and the Lewis Board of Public Works reviewed the request. They recommend acceptance of the waiver request. However, that, the 0.5 slope will only be acceptable if the velocity of flow is greater than or equal to three feet per second while providing the necessary freeboard from various storm events.
Is Charlie still with us?
Yes.
Charlie, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I, I actually think it's something that we may, maybe want to address in the code because that 0.5% is, in our typical designs around the city, we use the 0.5% for what we call stormwater pipe leads that lead from the catch basin into the stormwater main. So if you take any particular street in town, if it has catch basins on either side, there's leads that go into a stormwater main in the middle of the street. And those leads are required to be at 0.5%. But our standard engineering practice is to hold three feet per second velocity depending on the pipe size and its slope, which is an easy thing to review and check.
I have a question about it.
Explain, freeboard? Yeah.
I have a question. Are they asking for a lower percentage of slope or a higher percentage of slope? They, they don't really say.
A lower percentage. So if you have 24-inch pipe, it, it might be 0.24% or something like that.
I don't know how you can build to that tolerance.
Yes, that's kind of hard.
No, it really isn't now with today's lasers and construction techniques.
Charlie, is it their intent to use the pipe for storage?
No, 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 no.
Sit in there?
No, I did, but I do, I did want to put that in there just to make sure that it's not laying flat and we have, you know,
Yeah.
the 10-year storm sitting in the pipe, yeah.
And explain to me about the freeboard. I'd, I associate that with the first floor in home construction, not with freeboard, with pipe levels. How does that work?
Well, freeboard might not exactly be the right word. I just want to make sure that, my thought there was that there's going to be pipe leading into the stormwater management pond.
Uh huh.
And I don't want the 10-year storm level in that pond to be laying in the pipe if it could be made more vertical with a greater slope, so to speak.
Okay. You want to say necessary slope probably from various storm events?
Yeah, I think we can probably even just leave that out and it's something that I can review during the review process.
Okay.
Janelle, can you put up the original request from the engineer, please?
Freeboard.
That's, that's sort of where it came from, Joe.
That's Delvaad language.
All right, any questions for Charlie? Any other questions for Charlie? Hearing none.
Wait, wait a minute, I just have one question. I'm sorry, Charlie, what was the language you said maybe should be taken out of this and dealt with separately? Was it the information, was it the discussion on the velocity of flow or?
Actually, actually, let's, let's leave the language in there because the applicant actually references required freeboard. So that was my way of addressing his reference, so I'd like to leave it in there.
Thank you.
Janelle, did Sumner have a question? He's having some trouble with his audio.
Yeah, Sumner has a question about will it be impacted by sea level rise?
Everything's impacted.
The 10 and 25 years are what the engineers required to design his stormwater management device around per state requirements.
And then Sumner wants to know, are the 10 and 25 years the right timeframes?
Yeah, that's my response, is that, that's what the engineers require, that and also allowing for the 100-year to exit the stormwater management pond without damaging any adjacent properties.
And then what happens after 25 years? Are we on the hook?
I think, I think we're talking about two different 25 years. We're talking about the 25-year storm event versus 25 years of-
The life of the pipe, yeah.
Sea level rise, yeah.
Yeah. Just reading the questions asked.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Sumner, you're still muted. Can you not unmute?
He's having trouble. He's going to try and call in.
Okay. All right, do we have any further discussion of this request for a waiver? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend the mayor and city council to waive the Lewis Board of Public Works request standard for a pipe slope of 0.5. And.
With the specifications as identified by the city engineer?
Correct, yes. So just about to say that, was tongue tied.
Is there a second for Joe's motion?
I second it.
All right, further discussion. Sumner, can we hear you now? No, okay. Any other comments or questions? Can I call the question then? All in favor of approving the waiver request for the 0.5% from the 0.5% pipe slope, together with the engineering specifications? Say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? We know, of course, that Kay is still recused from this matter. All right, moving on then to item B4, presentation and discuss it, discussion regarding resiliency community recommendations compiled from various reports. And ask Kay to take us through this and talk about another upcoming meeting.
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to just say in general terms that Janelle has gone through probably 15 years' worth of reports that were contracted to the city, probably starting with the Quinn report, one of the most important. And she did this as part of the mitigation planning team's work. And it's, and connect me, correct me if I'm wrong, Janelle, but it seems that the mitigation planning team has realized that it really has two kinds of work that it's doing. Sort of immediate issues such as fragmities control and city owning satellite phones for emergencies and then other issues that really fall under the purview of Planning Commission. And Janelle has gone through meticulously all of these reports and organized tasks that really fall to Planning Commission. And as part of this effort to figure out really, how can we carry on under the umbrella, say, of sea level rise or resilience really? What we'd like to do is to have a workshop between the members of the Planning Commission, members of the mitigation planning team, and of course, the public, to talk about things that specifically we can do to add to a resilience program for the city. The mayor, Councilman Morgan, and Danielle Swallow and I have picked out the date of October 1st. And I hope that works for everyone. I'll send out a note tomorrow about it. I wanted to say something more or less in person today about that. And what we would get out of that is, my intention is a list of actions that we can do. This also would lead in, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What time on the first?
I'm not sure yet. I need to find out from everybody if even the first is the, the date. But I'll send a note out tomorrow that gets some ranges like during the day or in the evening, what works best for everyone. The other aspect of this is that I'm going to be working with Joe and Janelle and hopefully Tom West to create a project priorities list, is what I'm calling it for the moment, kind of an action plan for the Planning Commission to get us at least through the next year and beyond. So far, I've organized things as far as resilience coordination, cyclical updates such as the sign ordinance and items needing revision. What I wrote down from tonight is, what is a complete application? I had already written down flood review process, floodplain review process. Definitions combined into one section. Are we moving forward with that or are we not? The list of 22 criteria for major subdivisions. Does that still serve us well or do we need to work on editing that into something a little sharper? I don't know. I'm, these are not answers, these are just the questions. And once we get the questions organized, then the chairman can figure out a timeline and a priority and as we are available as Planning Commission members, turn us loose on getting some solutions to these questions. So tomorrow, I'll send out a note about October 1st. But Janelle, could you take us through your resilient community recommendations report?
I'd be happy to. So again, many different reports were done, had lots of recommendations. So I just kind of went through and I categorized them a little bit. Our first slide is things we've already actually done. So the plans have not been sitting on the shelf. We've actually implemented a number of items. We adopted some things for the, in the floodplain ordinance, we've done some training, we've done some other things and things that we continue to do. So we have done things, we continue to do things that actually are coming from the reports, which I think is, is good. This is where we're going to start getting into recommendations. I kind of broke them down into different categories, kind of like how they fit together. Because a lot of the recommendations repeated multiple times in the reports or in the different reports, it was the same recommendation. So a couple of things, looking at sea level or floodplain, you know, updating the definitions, looking at, you know, amending some sea level rise, Janelle, which I think we're kind of doing in a different way. And then we also have some things that are going to require code amendments. So it's not just Planning Commission, it's going to be council and some of them actually be coordinating with B2BW. You know, evaluating entire basin drainage areas, including coastal surge, which I know has come up in a couple of different aspects by a number of people. Identifying and inventorying areas improvement for stormwater infrastructure. That would be something would be coordinating with BPW on, you know, monitoring and maintaining existing and future drainage systems. So this, these to me were all kind of like how we're working on with, you know, water management, sea level rise, flooding. So these are all our recommendations that are kind of like focused on that. As we continue with our recommendations, and again, there were a lot of them. Coordinate with the county- Coordinate with the county and the conservation district to track BMPs, best management practices. Continue intergovernmental coordination regarding stormwater infrastructure. Consider, right now, you need a detailed plan through the conservation district. If your 5,000 square feet are over, do we want to create strict regulations by that for less than 5,000 square feet? Other towns have done this. What would that entail? What are we looking like for that? Is that something we want to do? One of them was actually consider the establishment of a stormwater utility. I know this isn't a recommendation, but I also kind of wanted to make sure it was out there. Lewis did that. BPW, it's administered by the BPW. So one thing they could do is look at creative ways for incentives. That's what came out of that as well as part of the stormwater utility. It was like create one and then we already did that. So another one said, hey, create incentives. So that's why this is here. So and again, looking at capital budget review for upcoming improved, improved infrastructure improvements, stormwater and drainage. This one would really fall under BPW. Some of the other ones that we've got, you know, I think they're a little bit more manageable, you know, something that you can, like a landowner could do. You know, just for an idea, it's like identify the potential areas for a living shoreline, shoreline. Stabilizing coastal areas, reducing the amount of lot coverage, you know, we have up to 65% lot coverage in the city. Is that something we want to get, look at? And I know with sea level rise, we've actually been talking about that and looking at that and saying, maybe we reduce it, but if you want to go above it, you have to give us some best management practices. And I know we're going to be discussing that next week. You know, do a little bit more research. What is the best management practice that's going to give us the biggest bang for our buck approach, you know? You know, because there's, some of these products are really big, expensive. But is it worth it when we can do a bunch of other smaller things, little less money? And would that equal out? Work with local people for alternative surface materials and other BMP materials, you know? You know, from rain gardens to impervious, pervious coverage. Look at all those types of items. And as we continue, there was a lot of, how do we get the community involved? You know, how do we get outreach out there? And a lot of the recommendations were creating programs. You know, is there a way to help with costs or is there educational activities that we could do? Other partnerships that we can do with industry leaders, private community organizations. And I think what a lot of people were doing, and I've got a lot of examples in here that came out of the reports, were a lot of awards and recognition. You know, a yard sign or a flag or recognition that's like, hey, this is what you did. And it gives pride to like that person. And then, you know, well, you know, it's always had, it was kind of like keeping up with the Joneses. If you're doing something like, I can do that too. And then looking at incentive programs, you know, density, looking at BMPs for the total site, tax credits, reducing fees, reducing review time. Those were all items that were coming out as recommendations, as incentives to help increase the use of resiliency items. Now, as I was talking about lots of programs and a lot of these are focusing on that home ownership, that community, that business thing, aspect. And a lot of them have, you know, Pearl Homes Awards Program, Sustainable Yards. There was a great, you know, trash in show where you, the fashion show, but you used trash to make, you know, the fashion. You know, to get people to start thinking about that, you know, in the Elizabeth River Project, you know, River Star Homes, the Star Business, the Star School, you know, you were making that recognition of all of those different categories and aspects of the city. And then just a few more examples. These were kind of some existing programs that we can like utilize. The Livable Delaware Series, a lot of stuff like that. How about livable landscapes, controlling backyards, livable ecosystems? Green infrastructure, you know, the Home Water Stormwater Handbook, you know, just some things that examples of programs that exist and how can we use, you know, some of their information? I'm going to tell you, this came out of the, this is listing of all the BMPs, the best management practices from the reports. And several other reports is the exact same thing. So do we want to look at it as a misincentive or do we want it to be regulatory or do we want it to be both? So it broke it down into different categories like bio retention, tree box filters, streetly, streetscape, you know, bio retention, rain gardens, you know, some ways they're going to be easier as an incentive and some are going to need that more heavy regulatory push. So it's, it broke it down as to, you know, options as to what would be good as incentive and what would be good as regulatory and like some of them for the permio pavement are both, you know, how do we incentivize it and also make it regulatory? So just some different items that we're looking at just to kind of get ideas. And then are there other additional options that the city should be considering? Because again, went through all the reports, took them all together, looked at them. We're doing actually some good work on some of them. We've completed a number of them. But, and I know from the, like the Sea Level Rise Committee, their work isn't actually being called Sea Level Rise. That portion of ordinance, it's being called resiliency because when we were discussing it was like, oh, it's much bigger than a sea level rise. We could expand it to take a much broader look. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I think this is excellent because really what we've discovered in looking at these three subcommittees is that they're all bigger than what we're able to handle at the moment. So when we break things up into manageable pieces, they will all connect to make a really good resiliency plan for the city. It's going to take time and thought. And we also have a lot of work to do to make everything consistent throughout all the documents. But the thing is, I think, you know, when you think back to the Quinn report, which was either 2013 or 2015, I can't remember. But I feel like the city ordered the report, but we, we weren't really in a position to move on it. Now the door is open and I think we're, we're ready to march through it. We've had great response at the water workshops. Citizens from Lewis were more than 10% of the last Rascal Conference. And these weren't people who were volunteers. You know, these were just citizens who want to understand how the ecosystems of the city work. So I think in many ways, we're all on the same page. We might not agree on details, which is part of what we hammer out. But this is going to be a great guide to us figuring out what, what can we look at, what do we need to look at? And what will make life better in the city in the years to come? So I think taking this and I'll work it into an action plan with all kinds of other things. And then as, as we rotate through these different subcommittees, then we become free to be assigned to other issues and continue to add the pieces to this resiliency plan. I think this is excellent.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go Sumner.
Awesome. Janelle and Kay, I want to thank you for all of this. I think this is amazing. I'm sorry, I've been trying to deal with audio stuff. I, I wholeheartedly support what you're suggesting here. I, I think you did a fabulous job of putting all these things together and I look forward to helping out in any way possible.
Excellent.
Wonderful.
We're going to need, we're going to need everybody's enthusiasm and smarts to get this done, but I think this is, this is what we're ready for. And 10 years ago, the city wasn't really quite ready, but now I think we hear it from the citizens loud and clear. They are ready and they want us to be working on this. So I feel very good about it.
And I think, you know, Tom and I have been chiming in on a bunch of things with sea level rise. Joe made a comment about it earlier. Resiliency is the right framework here. There are a lot of things that connect with a lot of other things and we need to, I've been making a point on a fairly regular basis in each of these subcommittees. We need to make sure and connect these things as soon as possible because if we start making decisions on, on one of these things without considering the broader sort of resiliency stuff, we end up not doing the job we're trying to do. So however we can, we can crosswalk all these different subjects, the sooner the better. I think the better off we'll be. In each of the decisions we're trying to make for floodplains, for wetlands, for sea level rise, for whatever other committees get spawned as we move forward. We need to keep an integrated perspective.
Any other questions?
Are there any from the public, Janelle?
There was one comment from the public and it was about building code needing changes to make our homes more resilient, especially in close proximity to the bay. For example, hurricane proof windows should be required. That's the International Code Council addresses building code and the city adopt, typically adopts that code. And I do know in certain areas hurricane, it's not really hurricane, it's wind speed. That's going to, your wind speed area, that's going to trigger some of those questions. But I do know the building code looks at that and looks at other things.
Adding it to the list as we speak.
Could I ask just a general question? And this is probably a Tom West question, I guess. If the city begins to vary from a uniform code, like the International Building Code, are there any rules about that in terms of when you are no longer actually in a uniform code situation? I, I don't think so. I just didn't know how much we could vary from, from that without causing any kind of consequences.
My understanding is like, Janelle, that we've adopted the building code, but we already have amendments to it. I think the building code provides the foundation. And we talked earlier about FEMA. It's the same way FEMA reviews of floodplain ordinance for the basic regulations, but all along they say that a township or city can go further than the basic regulations. And usually for things like, I think the good example was that we're near the bay and hurricane windows, whether or not we need something, standards for wall strength or other things that go over and above the standard for it.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
I think you can sort of cherry pick in some ways because I think sprinklers was part of the International Building Code, but there was an uproar about retrofitting homes with sprinkler systems. And I think the county, I think, adopted some of the wind standards, but I don't remember the mechanism and I don't know how, how you pick and choose what sections you take and what sections you don't. I, I don't remember, but those were the two.
The IRC has a section in the front that says that it must be endorsed by the community and any sections can either be amended or not. So the IRC already foresees that and specifically like with sprinklers or many other parts of the code. You can modify not enforce or enforce and create your own.
So we've got Robin, our building official online, if you'd like an answer from him.
Well, I'll just, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We're, we're currently using the 2012 ICC codes. And yes, you, you can take bits and pieces of it if you want. Again, as Kay said, the sprinkler code. Some, some communities have backed out of the sprinkler systems. There's a lot of amendments that the county has done as far as step heights and rise or heights and things like that. So you can do what you feel is necessary for your community. So you can take and subtract whatever and just amend it. And I think we've done that and that's, gets put into chapter 70 of the building code that says you're amending or you're accepting this section of the code with these amendments.
Yeah, that's right. And, you know, these codes are, you know, two, two and a half inches, three inches thick. So to actually get away from the code, you'd have to amend a whole lot before you ever started to look like something that's not the international code. So, but it's very common that jurisdictions adopt the code and then make amendments that apply specifically to that community circumstances.
All right, any other comments or questions? I apologize. I'm in the Sumner category. My internet connectivity has been in and out unfortunately of late. I just want to add something to what Kay said and what obviously Kay and Janelle have been working on. One of the goals, I think, for the commission is to accentuate the planning aspect of our work over the next year or so, which is both a short term and a long term focus. While we have some applications that we're indeed going to see again, including Fisher's Cove presumably and Lewis Waterfront Reserve. The pipeline is not overflowing at the moment. And more importantly, I think there are many things we've talked about over the last year that we need to address. And Tom and Janelle have compiled lists. Kay's got more lists than probably everybody put together of various parts of the code that we need to look at. But I think we want to take a broad perspective on this. Not necessarily starting afresh and rewriting what Glenn referred to as the three inches of a existing standard. But I do think we have to take a broad look at this and I invite the public to contribute, stay part of this, to help us look at those areas that are most critical first and to give us their input and guidance as necessary. But I really look forward to the opportunity and the challenge of looking at planning in a slightly different way than we have much of this last year and a half or so. So I want to commend everybody who's worked on this to get us to this point. I'm looking forward to the meeting, maybe October 1st. So we can begin to share resources and efforts. And I think we'll have a much better result as, as the work continues. So before Warren, then step up because we've got a lot we need to do. All right, any other comments today on the resilient community recommendation, presentation or otherwise? Kay will circulate a memo tomorrow about the time and date. Hopefully we'll be able to get an easy concurrence on when that can be. Hearing none, I'm going to move on then to unfinished business. Item C1, discussion and possible action regarding wetlands buffer ordinances. Again, wetland buffer ordinance was attached to the agenda. There was a link to the agenda and the public comment. And I think there was only one public comment other than what we got at the hearing. Is that right, Janelle?
I think everything came, yes, correct. Yes, we got one letter that the commission
Concerned citizens.
Yes.
Rodney, Hornkill and Friends.
Yeah, the subcommittee
July 31st.
Did review that.
And we did have some comments and there was a, in the minutes, there was a resuscitation of the various items that were discussed in the minutes for our July 15th public meeting, hearing, public meeting, not hearing. So do we have any? Any other comments anybody is aware?
True, can you hear me? Am I coming through?
Yes, Sumner, we can hear you. Go ahead.
So
Ordnance and relating it to some of the comments and concerns that have been raised.
So I have a, I have a concern I've raised in both the Wetland Committee and the Sea Level Rise Committee. And I would be remiss not to mention it here. Any strict Any strict horizontal buffer, no matter what the number, 50 feet, 20 feet, 100 feet, 1,000 feet, is limited by the slope of the land where you apply it. As you get to a gentler slope, a flatter slope, every small rise of water will encroach pretty seriously on, on where those lines work. And the reason I bring this up is sea level rise in particularly along the sections of the sort of annexation area where I assume major subdivisions would be an issue, a good portion of the wetland margin there is in a low slope environment that in a matter of 30 years, water will routinely inundate those wetlands. So a 50-foot buffer isn't going to cover them. I mean, I've got a couple of graphics I put together. I'm happy to share them. It may not be the time to do that, but I'm curious what we, we think about this.
What is your proposal in light of your comment?
Well, it, it may be that, you know, we leave it at this 50-foot or whatever level, but I think with sea level rise, as we, as we are now the numbers of sea level rise, I would like to find a way to, to incorporate sea level rise numbers into this wetland buffer discussion because as the sea level rises over the, you know, next, over the period of time that we're, we're discussing, there are portions of these wetlands that will be inundated unless we've allowed more room for them to move inland, upland, they will disappear. So if our, if our goal, at least part of our goal here is to protect the wetlands in some portions of the areas where we're working, we're gonna need something more than a strict horizontal distance. And I don't have the language to, to recommend a replacement. I know the county was unwilling to, to discuss something of this order. I've had many conversations with Danielle Swallow over the last, since I first met her about this. I think there's a need to do this. I don't know whether we want to try to do it right now, but I think we will not meet our goal of protecting the wetlands along the areas that will be annexed, that we hope will be annexed into the city if we simply use a 50-foot or 100-foot or whatever buffer.
Well, I can say I was not at, I was not thinking of any particular parcel when we were talking about this because redevelopment of areas around the community is certainly an issue and the definition of major subdivision doesn't have to be acres and acres and acres. So the other thing that we were concerned with is figuring that wetlands move and that we certainly have heard this from the community who has come to us saying, 30 years ago, my backyard was dry and now it's wet. So I think this has become apparent in the community and so what we were trying to do was just get an initial, small portion of this problem dealt with in an organized, reasonable way. This was, and to my mind, the easiest. The hardest is what happens if you already live on property that's becoming wet? That's the hardest. So that was our thought in putting this together.
Perhaps, you know, the rubric that we've been using, the sea level rise committee, may be useful in this wetlands, given what, what Kay just said, which I think is, is spot on. We've been looking at existing development. We've been looking at redevelopment as Kay just suggested that then we're about to get into a, a new development stage. Each of those categories might carry different issues, different challenges. And I'm not sure that treating new development in large tracts of land with large numbers of subdivided lots that might be developed, treating them with a small, carefully constructed, sensitive buffer like we might do in a redevelopment down by the beach, those are two different things. And, you know, it's a, it's a scale thing and I'm not, I'm not, I'm at least not comfortable. When I look at the areas that are out along New Road that we have identified as being places where we want to annex into the city, those are large tracts of land. I don't think that a 50-foot buffer is appropriate for those tracts of land. I'll just put that out there. For, you know, redeveloping a lot here, redeveloping a lot there, I think the 50, the 50 feet may make sense, but I, I just don't want this to hang for very long before we've treated it with a, with a more thorough approach in these big tracts of land that are out on the edge of the city.
Well, our problem is coming into some sort of alignment for that area or for anywhere outside what's currently in the city, not just any one specific area. I don't want to address any one specific area, is we have to basically be in align with the county if the county ever adopts its plan. So that's part of the reason for some of our choices. The other is it also has to be reasonable if you have five lots. It has to be reasonable for that proportion as well.
I think that Sumner was proposing-
And you don't want to annex in.
John, do you want to say that again?
Well, I'm just saying like, I get what you're saying about protecting the wetlands, but people also need to be able to use the lands. And who's going to want to annex into the city if they look at the property and they're like, well, there's no value there because I can't do anything with the property. So, you know, that could lock us in too. Plus, I think we have time. I don't think like there's a switch that's gonna flip and then all of a sudden the water's at our feet. I think planning and, you know, staying calm and focusing on the problems we have to deal with is, and I think that's what we try to do with this, you know, come up with how can we protect the immediate need that we have now with our resources? And 50, we, we went, you know, back and forth through the committees with the engineers and that's how we came to all of these decisions.
Melanie, you had something to say?
We, we have-
Yeah, I wanted to say, you know, the sea level rise issue, I recognize is very real and it will impact floodplain and it will impact wetlands. But right now, we need to get something in place to protect these things. And we can always amend, once the sea level rise committee comes up with some ideas on how they want to make recommendations, we can always amend our, you know, what we're, what we're putting in place. But I feel a real need to get something in place on both of these issues more quickly. I, I think we, you know, sea level rise is a really difficult issue and we recognize that it needs to be addressed, but let's get these things in place now so we can make changes later.
And I was gonna second that. I was gonna second what Melanie just said. I think it's important that we get something on the table or on the books now. And I agree with you, Sumner, that horizontal measures in a flat slope like we are is a problem, but we can always look at down the line, adding a vertical component to the buffer in areas like maybe in new developments. But we don't know that we're going to be able to solve world hunger all at one piece now. And, you know, if we don't get anything on the books, we're gonna have nothing to protect us in the near term. So I, I completely understand your concerns. I just, I think the sooner we get some of this stuff on the books, the better we are.
Okay, so why, if we're interested in coordinating with the county, why are we using buffers that are different from the counties?
The county has a range of buffers. They're, depending on what type of wetland, what type of water body, they had a range, each one had kind of its own type of buffer. We just went straight out, you're a wetland, you get this buffer.
Well, given that my, I, I don't, I don't remember what the current county title wetland is. My, my concern is largely about the changes that occur, that will occur on the title wetlands. What's the title wetland situation?
Title wetlands from the county is 50 feet. They have no, no buffer from non-title. It is only from title. This proposal is 50 feet from any type of wetland.
All right, well, then, I'm, I'll, I'll, I look forward to improving on, on what we've got here. I can't argue the need to have something. I just hope that we find a way of addressing these areas that will be inundated in a matter of decades by sea level rise and the, the, whatever protections we put in place won't, won't matter.
Well, I have to say, we've been working really hard on this and I resent the idea that it needs your improvement. I, I mean, maybe I'm just too sensitive here, but I agree with Melanie. We need to have something on the books and all of us have something to contribute. All of us are working together in groups. All of us are coming into the center to make the best that we can as groups. If we were all working as individuals, the whole thing would be done, but this is group work and it has to have everybody's stamp on it.
And remember, this is just a recommendation to council. Council has the ability to change it if they so choose.
Council will have to have a public hearing as well.
Absolutely.
So there's two more bites at the apple at least. I don't hear Sumner being unwilling to move forward, recognize other things that we could add to this or change down the road, but I do think that's going to take some creative exploration or thinking on our part because I don't know of a solution, Sumner, that mirrors your gauge, if you will, of the future. And we may be-
I don't have one either.
So, but I, I would like to go back if I could for just a minute to Kay. There were a number of questions from both the public meeting on July 15th and on the one written comment we got from the six or so residents of the community. Do you have any response to some of those that we could hear, please?
We met as a group and we went through and addressed all of them because they were all very thoughtful. I mean, we didn't get from, you know, a lot of people, but everything was very thoughtful and I'm very grateful for that. We wrestled a lot with language regarding non-invasive but native and that kind of thing. So we were trying to make sure that we got that to be clear and correct. We did move things around so that the purpose is clearer. If I can read my own handwriting. We're working on a visual representation. Hopefully, Janelle is also an artist as well as all the other hats that she wears because we all agree a drawing would be great, but I have no talent in that direction.
So, and just so everybody knows, the link that was on the agenda takes you to the, to the version that was updated that includes that visual reference and those changes that were made.
And now we did get a couple of suggestions from Glenn at the end of the day today. And one of them is where we have the word with instead of with.
Yep, already fixed it.
Perfect. And then he also suggested in one section, G24, change in the language, say, "The wetland buffer shall not traverse any lot intended to be developed with one or more dwelling units," for clarity. And I think that's, I think that's a good change. And other than that, I'm not sure. I, I think, you know, other than the general question of, is 100 enough or 50 enough, which is, you know, a question we've had from the beginning, you know, what is an achievable goal? I believe that we've addressed or adopted all of the suggestions that have come in from the public.
I am gonna let you know, we've got a couple of questions from the public on the chat today. I'm gonna notice that the public, you guys closed your public comment on July 31st. There is definitely going to be opportunity for the public to comment when it goes before a public hearing before the mayor and city council. That has not been scheduled yet, so I would suggest keeping those comments for that meeting because that's when they can be addressed. Or if you've got them in between, you want to send them to me, I will make sure they are part of the file and part of the record and will go to the mayor and city council at the appropriate time.
I don't see Drew here. Is, is he gone?
He may have dropped off again. I keep checking, so.
Okay.
Kay, are you?
Are we forwarding this to the council now? Are we gonna vote on it and then?
I think we'll, we'll vote on it and see if in, if in general, the, the commission feels it's ready to move on to mayor and council for them to set a public hearing. Do we want to, wait a minute, do you want to go ahead and, if you want to make a motion or if someone would make a motion, we can move it-
I'll make a motion now. Forward the wetland buffer proposal to the city council.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The only question is, should we get Drew's vote on this?
No. I have to say, I'm so over Zoom. I, I, I can't wait until we're all in the same room.
Yeah, I just think for the record, since we're sending it to mayor and city council, it's certain would be nice to have the chairman's name.
Yes, especially since he's just a minute away.
Can someone phone him and get him on that way?
I'll try calling him.
Thank you. I'm using my phone.
Yeah. Hey Kay, for your information, once you use Zoom too much, you become a Zoombee.
I feel like that.
A Zoombee's, yes, new word.
I have arrived, I think.
So did you want to try and get Drew on or did you want to move on to the next item on the agenda?
I'm calling Drew right now.
Perfect.
Kay, while we're waiting, I just want to say that I never expected that whatever I thought would be, you know, would be what mattered here. All I'm interested in doing is being a part of this, this group discussion and I was not able to make that last meeting. I tried to raise this in a, in a wetlands, in several wetland subcommittee meetings and was told that, that sea level rise was the place to do it. Sea level rise, I'm interested in talking about it right now. I also am looking forward to a time when we're not doing Zoom. I think this is a terrible way to conduct business and it makes it very hard for us to have the kind of open dialogue that we need to have.
I agree.
I hope that you, I don't mean, I do not mean to offend you or to make you think that you, that I, I think in some way you've done a, a, a poor job of doing this. I think you've handled an incredible number of variables and put together a very reasonable, worthwhile ordinance here.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
I always aspire to make it better. It's the more perfect thing that I'm always after and I apologize for pushing it so hard.
Well, I appreciate that and I, I think it's, this format is just really tough for what we do. And I, I miss seeing all of us in person and I miss seeing the public in person and I worry that we're doing some of the most important work I think we'll ever do and we're yelling into our phones and it just-
I agree.
I worry that there are a lot of really great ideas that we won't hear because this is such a clumsy method. I mean, it's certainly better than nothing. I mean, Rehoboth did nothing for months, but- I mean, Rehoboth did nothing for months, but, um, and I'm happy that we did not do that. You know, we've been slogging through and getting things done, but I, I look forward to us at least being in the same room, even if we're all spread out.
Drew, are you with us?
I also look forward to hearing from the public.
Yes.
Tools are going back, when will we be getting the in-person meetings? Sounds like we're ready.
I think mentally, we're ready.
It, it, it's much more complicated than that.
Much more complicated.
The problem is that
1100
you have, you cannot, you can't socially distance this many people in council chambers and still have them all show up on, on the feed. That's number one. Number two, we can't, I mean, we, I think we all want to go back to in-person meetings, but how would we have the public attend? I mean, they would have to be spaced
We could probably do some kind of hybrid. I mean, I hear a lot of, we can't, I can't, I can't, but somehow the I think we could at least do what happens with that, if we could go in person.
I, I couldn't agree with you more, that it would be great, but we, we, I, just, just for starters, there's no way with the technology that we have that we could get all the members of the planning commission seated at the table, six feet apart, and, uh, on the screen or the feed. Since you can't have the public present, you've got to have the public be able to see, uh, the commission doing its work.
And Amory just chimed in, saying that we do not have the technology to do the hybrid. I know they've been looking at it, unfortunately, we're just not there right now. Drew, have you joined us?
I'm seeing.
So, so can I just say, I share, I share your all's frustration with this, with this approach, but, you know, while the pandemic is with us, it's the best we can do, and at least we can, to Kay's point, at least we can do this. Because it would be really, truly awful if everything ground to a halt during all these months that we've been, we've been dealing with this. And the other thing we have to consider is, is the staff. I mean, we have city council, we have city hall closed to the public, uh, to protect the staff, so that's another factor in deciding when and how to, uh, to start opening up.
I think we have Drew now, don't we?
I don't know, I s, I don't see it.
I don't see him. I talked to Susan and
Yeah, I'm back on the phone.
Yeah, that's what I thought, all right.
So Drew, we, we voted to move, uh, the wetlands ordinance to mayor and council for their consideration. Do you, do you want to vote on that?
Affirmatively.
Excellent, in that case, it, it was unanimous.
Wonderful.
Well, thank the subcommittee for all its work, and all of the members for their comments on this. I think we will, um, continue to work on all of these matters, as has been discussed several ways and times tonight. Can we move on then to item C2, discussion and possible action regarding 5G wireless facilities? Again, the documents were attached to the agenda item, the link to the, uh, items from the agenda. Tom West, do you want to update us where we are, please? You're muted, Tom.
Um, it'll, should unmute in just a second.
I'm sorry.
You're good, Tom.
So we've gone through this, the, the various documents quite a bit in the past meetings, so I'm going to just go give an overview of what's happened since the last meeting and, uh, entertain any questions commission members have. We, as you know, and the, the link is on the, on the webs, on the agenda, there is an ordinance amendment, which we're really, that's what, um, we are interested in talking about, taking that recommendation to city council. There is also a design guidelines, it's not something council adopts, but it works with us. There's an application form. Those are all on the website, and the other document is the Lewis Board of Public Works Poll Licensing Agreement. So that's something they will use. And if you've listened in the past, there's also a flow chart that describes a somewhat complicated process of how these facilities would work under this proposal. Since we last met, we took the ordinance amendment. Um, we did have some comments, uh, that I could go through. We also met with the Historic Preservation and Architectural Review Committee to discuss the process. That was a recommendation of the planning commission before we take this further. Janelle and I presented it to them and had discussions with them. There was some input on, um, some of the aspects of the design guidelines. And Janelle, they had a couple suggestions, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that any, uh, about some of their points?
Um, some of them were just kind of cleaning up some items, um, some questions about, if they could see what it was going to look like when it was submitted, getting clarification on, you know, what it means when there's none allowed on Second Street. So a few things like that, and we've been working through and making those changes to the design guidelines.
And I think, and we've heard this from the planning commission also, is more visuals will help with this. It's something that other communities have created some, we could probably ask them if we could use those. Um, I think that the Historic Preservation and Architecture Review Commission is particularly interested in case they see any, uh, they would like to know what's the potential opportunities, what they could ask for. And I think that's something that's important that we can add to this document as we move forward. We also received comment from one of the cellular providers. Really, there was not much on the ordinance. They did suggest that we take out one of the definitions that wasn't used, it was distributed. Let me see if I can find it in my copy. Under the definition section, there was a term, "distributed antenna systems." That was not, it wasn't the original ordinance effect. So there was a, um, definition, but it, it's been pulled out of that. They're basically systems that large organizations might use, and uses similar technology, but it's not in the, in this ordinance amendment. So we think it does make sense to, to pull that out of the, this proposed amendment before it goes forward, because it would just add to confusion on it. And outside of that, we did get, um, Commissioner Aneta sent us, um, his write-up was really good in, uh, adding things for clarification, that if it's not a board of public poll comes to the city for review, clarifying that, so there's less confusion. Uh, there was also other ones about a definition where he also said we weren't using it. Tom, do you remember which one that was? I think it was, I have it here, I can look at it. The, um,
I have to open it up.
Maybe it wasn't that, it was, you did, you were asking though about antenna height. And I do apologize, I didn't get a chance to ask Robin about that yet. It's, it's not at the city street, it, what, um, street center line, it's at the base of the pole, which is different than the way they measure height for everything else. So we'll get clarification from the building officials, if that's okay, if we work with them and just change that or ask them about that. But other than that, all your other comments made sense, and, um, we've, we folded those into the draft that would go to council for reviews, but they were the main changes that were made since we last met with you, and they're, they're not on the, uh, draft that's up on the website, because we, because we were waiting for any more comments, but we will fold all those in to the draft ordinance, which Glenn will get in case he needs some interesting reading through you before it goes to city council. So that's, that's where we stand with everything on it.
There were a few comments that I want to go over that came from the provider that, in the design guidelines that they had, some of them made sense to me. I just automatically, like, that makes sense, clean, more cleaner with the federal regulations. Um, they had some, some comments that, like, in the general requirements, they wanted it added to the extent technically feasible. Because we say you have to do this, and I think they want some leeway. So that's something for you guys to consider. Um, they also want, the guideline said 300 feet from another small cell antenna, and they want 150 feet from another small cell antenna owned by the applicant. And then, for height, we had not to exceed 10% of the existing pole structure, and they want, or a height of 50 feet, whichever is greater.
Wow.
Those are big changes.
That's pretty aggressive.
That's why I, like, some of the ones a little, I, I had, made sense to me. And then regarding that we had nothing on Second Street, they wanted no new structures on Second Street, absent applicant providing evidence that there are no viable alternative locations, such that the applicant will be materially imped, inhibited from providing service. So they want an out to be able to provide, um, and equipment on Second Street, and they would also like a waiver request in the guidelines to allow for waivers from the guidelines.
Everything they've asked for completely undoes what we have.
That's why I'm bringing it to your review and your those comments are actually on the website. Uh, those are as comments that were submitted, so those are for your review. Um, some of the little ones, you know, made more sense, but to the, to me, I wasn't making those changes because they were large and they needed discussion by the commission.
I would say they are pretty undermining.
So, so just, just to understand, one of the recommendations that the provider suggested, that going to 150 feet, 300 feet, if I have those numbers right, for a given provider, that means that you could have multiple providers sort of crisscrossing and not being coincident with each other. So it might not be 150 feet from each other, they might be 50 feet from each other. And there might be a whole network of all these things, am I reading that right?
Yes. That's the way I read it.
I think they want to be within 150 feet of their own, not somebody else.
Right, that's what that says. That's what, that's what they just asked for.
Right, but if somebody is 50 feet away already,
they don't care.
They wouldn't be able to put it there, and what they want is, we just said straight out, 300 feet from another small cell equipment, and they want 150 feet from, like, if I'm XYZ company, I want to be 150 feet from XYZ company, and in the middle of that could be ABC company.
You know, Janelle, I hadn't thought about it, but maybe that's a provision we want to think more about, because, well, a couple reasons. One is, in a perfect instance, you'd have multiple providers co-located on one pole, so you wouldn't have several different locations. So if then you can drive to co-locate, that's, that's better. Their, you know, their distance from their own network is because they're trying to cover, provide coverage for themselves. It doesn't help Verizon if AT&amp;T is only 50 feet away. So that's, that's their issue with, you know, it, it being measured from their own thing. But, but I'd be careful to put an exception in that allows for co-location. I mean, that, that provision, you know, you don't want a separation of 150 feet if they're willing to relocate on the same pole, I guess.
No.
Is there technical?
This is for, like, new, like, new towers for the siding prohibit, prohibitions, because we want them to co-locate.
Right.
This was more for a new structure, so I think maybe we need to, to work on that one.
Yeah, can I, can I just say one thing about, um, the multiple provider issue? You know, it's possible, I don't know enough about 5G to, to know whether it would be different from the infrastructure that we have now, but, you know, there, there, there's never been an exclusive franchise to provide this kind of telecommunications before in Lewis. I mean, Comcast is, is who we have, but there's never been anything to prevent a Verizon or some other carrier from coming in. So all I'm, I guess all I'm saying is that, having had the opportunity for all these years, no other carrier has actually, uh, taken, taken any steps, as far as I know, to come in. So you'd have, you never know, but, um, if passed as prologue, uh, there wouldn't be multiple providers.
This technology changes that, though.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, I know, that, that could well be true. I'm just, I'm just giving you sort of a, one other thing to consider.
Well, the difference between Bonnie, what you just cited, that's for internet service, this is more like AT&amp;T, Sprint, T-Mobile, and they do all have, uh, towers in the city.
They do. I think they co-locate on a couple of towers, but they've got their own antennas. Sure, yeah. Yeah. All, all, all I'm saying is that, that, today, no one has come in to provide this kind of thing. Now, 5G may be different, I don't know.
Well, 5G is just a cellphone.
Right.
So my understanding for the 5G is, they need to be, it's a smaller antenna than what you see on the really large towers, but they also need a smaller spacing, because it doesn't travel as far. So they need to be closer together, and from what we, what was requested is, we had just said, hey, you have to be 300 feet apart from each other. But what they're wanting is, we just want to be 150 feet apart from each other, from our own stuffs.
Is it, could you?
Good, huh?
Could you imagine a situation where we actually set up, we predetermined places? Is it in, in the city's best interest to sort of have co-located spots that are suitable, that basically we develop so that we can minimize this crisscross business of multiple networks? Throwing themselves over the city?
I think the, the way, the one approach to that, Sumner, is that where the locations are on the existing poles, that's the path of least resistance, is to co-locate on the existing utility poles or on, on the towers that are out there. The process gets harder to build new structures, and, and that's done by intention. They get, have to go through different reviews. Um, it's hard to say they can't, they have to build in these places, but, um, that you can build a system that really makes it, uh, more, the, the reviews are easier when they're putting them on where the existing facilities are at.
I'm thinking in the incentivizing mode that, that Janelle was talking earlier, how can we help the process along for everybody's benefit?
Well, if it's a small cell facility, this is in the BP pole attachment license agreement. If they are not putting it on a pole, they, they need to provide documentation on why they cannot do it. There's, there's a lot of, um, information they need to provide to the city through that part of the review. And it's also becomes, if it's, if it's not, if it's in areas that are considered, um, significant changes to poles and other things, it goes from administrative review at the city to conditional use review. So there is incentives built into the process to use, to put their antenna to co-locate on the existing structures, as opposed to go out and locate new structures for the reasons I think everybody's aware of. We'd rather them not be putting more poles up and using the ones that are out there.
And Tom and Glenn, I mean, we have to be very careful, because there are FCC and state regulations which prevent us from restricting anything being placed on the state right of ways, on the right of ways. So we're, we're working a fine line, and I certainly do not think that it's feasible for the city to lay out the grid and tell any provider, this is where you put your antenna. I mean, that's what they have network analysts, analysts for.
I agree with that, Tom, I think it'll be almost impossible. The, the FCC regs are pretty, they grant pretty broad authority to the providers, um, to install these things. You know, on the, on the aesthetics front, for example, there is some FCC guidance that says, so long as the restrictions are reasonable, so long as the restrictions are no, uh, greater than you apply to any other, um, utility provider, and so long as the restrictions are objective, you can, you can have these aesthetic requirements. You have to meet those three criteria. And objectivity is one that always, yeah, and the question about, are you applying this to other utility providers in, in a like manner? You know, so e, even applying the aesthetic is, is difficult. Rehoboth Beach right now is dealing with 18 requests from Verizon to put, um, to attach to the poles on the boardwalks. They want 18 nodes on the boardwalk, AT&amp;T already has five on the boardwalk. So I mean, I don't know who's, might come into Lewis, but, but they, you know, to cover the beach, they think they need that might come into Lewis, but but they, you know, to cover the beach, they think they need that many. So they're, as Janelle said, they don't travel so far as as the earlier technology.
Yeah, the note they provided is the spacing of small cells is dependent on the capacity need of a particular area served. Um, the larger the capacity need, the closer the nodes may need to be spaced. A spacing, a three hundred foot spacing requirement may materially inhibit development, deployment in certain areas. They believe that one hundred and fifty feet is reasonable or that a waiver of such requirement be permitted where the provider can demonstrate that closer spacing is needed.
Yeah. And and if you go to, you know, I've been to a few seminars on this through the APPA. Um, it's those things, Janelle, plus it's the construction. So in a city, they have to touch closer because the frequency of the five G is much, much higher. And it does not have the penetrating or the bending capability that's used for the frequency of four G. And so you have c- construction which really isn't a reveal here and um the the bandwidth, the amount of data you can transfer.
So are you guys good with one hundred and fifty feet from another small cell antenna wireless equipment owned by the applicant?
Not unless we have something that says about co-locating, because we could wind up with these things on.
Well, actually, that one requirement is for co-location. If you look under placement and sighting of small wireless facilities, um, under co-location on existing polar building, uh number B, it says all new wireless equipment shall be a minimum. We have it at three hundred feet from another small cell antenna wireless equipment. And what they want is one hundred and fifty feet from that equipment owned by the applicant.
It's Janelle, I'm I'm imagining the the um situation that Glenn just described in Rehoboth. I just sent a message to Tom. I don't know if it went through, but I'm trying to imagine a network of these things that might ultimately be allowed based on the rules that we're setting up here. Do we have a way of visualizing this? So the ramifications of two thing, one hundred and fifty versus three hundred versus, I mean, the other thing, I mean, my worry is that there's a lot of different variables.
The standard length of a block is, I think, what I what I did the math, like, it was roughly almost a block length. Maybe a little bit more.
Three hundred is?
Yeah, from what I can recall. And it's been a while since I looked at the dimensions.
My street, my street is five hundred feet long.
Right. I think I was going like one way because there's the short end and there's a longer end. So um they might need to put it. Because if you think about it, uh, road frontage is fifty to seventy-five feet. So every six houses, if you've got a fifty-foot frontage, they need to put a a node. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to leave now. Okay. See you next time. Thank you.
But Janelle, that's not what they're
Right now.
They're saying one hundred and fifty feet from the next.
From one that they own.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't mean like fifty feet away, there's another pole and that would have a different provider on it.
And and that's where I think we want to be get, try to put some restrictions.
Yeah. And that's where they're coming back and saying that could severely impact deployment of five G if we say you have to be three hundred feet from any other small cell provider. If they co-locate, that's fine. You know, they can both be on the same pole, but they're saying they need to be, they may need in certain areas, need to be closer than three hundred feet from one of their other nodes.
Can I ask how this works? Will they, will they come to us with and and say, this is how it's going to be all around the city? Or is it just coming? Do you know what I mean? Like, will we be, will we see a plan of the overall network? Like, what's going to happen at Lewis Beach? What's going to happen at the at the hospital, at the fire department? Like, how are they handling all those sort of super needs? Or are we just sort of going to get what we get?
I think it's going to come in piecemeal.
Yep.
Done. Got it.
Judging from the way it sounds like Rehoboth is working, it's coming in in bits and pieces, and this may only be the beginning.
Well, exactly. And I mean, we can't be the first community with a historic, um, you know, with Second Street, with the buildings and also with the um street lamps. So what do other communities do to protect them?
So we
Quite a few draft ordinances that we've gotten from various places. And I mean, I think that's where the language for um the decorative poles and all of that came from.
Yes. But they don't want to, but they don't want to go with that because the revision they turned in just was sort of like, well.
No, their issue is they don't, they they're stating that there are going to be instances that they need to be closer than three hundred feet from another node. And their concern is if I've got AT&amp;T here and I've got Verizon coming here and they're seventy-five feet, that whoever second can't go, which means there might be a gap that will not provide five G. So what they want is instead of the hu- three hundred feet from like, nobody can be within each other unless you're on the same pole within three hundred feet. They want to be able to be one hundred and fifty feet from their other one. So they can meet the need that they are seeing.
Well, and when they're, if it's coming in piecemeal in specifics, if there's a waiver process for that and they say, we want to put a pole here because XYZ will patch this hole, wouldn't we mostly be in favor of granting that waiver if it makes sense at the time? Could we stick to waivers in this situation, especially with technology?
So they actually suggested a waiver section to the design standards that said, um, waivers of any design standard shall be granted where strict enforcement would materially inhibit deployment or where deviation from the standards better serves the interest of the applicant and the city.
The concern with that is that it actually incentivizes doing a piecemeal, because if you place an antenna, then can justify that you need a waiver. For antenna.
Well, I think it's something we we're going to have to, I think if everybody wants to like just consider it and think, go through their comments and take because I'm, what I'm getting is I don't know if we're ready to make a motion, a recommendation on this tonight. So
I for one am not ready.
Okay. So their comments are on the website. What I would do is, what I'm going to suggest is like, everybody take a look at them and then give me your feedback and we discuss next week or next month.
Janelle?
Yeah.
Where are they? I'm, I've been looking for them. I'm I'm having trouble finding them.
Okay, if you go to the link, you go to the website under um planning projects and
The wireless facility documents.
Facilities. Scroll down and it says submitted public comments.
Yeah.
You just click that link and scroll through that. Now, it's going to look like it's just normal, but when you see the little yellow, you hover over that and you're going to get comments.
All right, all right, cool. All right, thank you. Yeah, I've been looking at this document. I hadn't hovered over the yellow. Thank you.
Yeah, if you hover over the yellow, it's just the way it it um went into the to the internet.
All right, thank you.
Does it create a problem with pending ordinance doctrine if we wait?
Um. No, I, no, I don't think so. I mean, this is, this has not been introduced yet as well. Can't remember exactly what's happened at city council. It's getting
So it hasn't been introduced, but if it gets introduced and then commission still hasn't made it or recommend it. My understanding is it doesn't hurt if it gets introduced because then we get pending ordinance doctrine in.
Right.
And then the commission can still make a recommendation and then council can set a public hearing?
Yeah, that's, that's all true. Um, I mean, the good news on this is that it sounds like the provider is is with the city to some extent and discussing what might work for them. I mean, it doesn't sound like there being, yeah, at least I can tell you that the experience we had in Rehoboth Beach is that AT&amp;T and Verizon are pretty um willing with us to make sure that both sides, you know, mentioned the poles on the boardwalk. For example, Verizon has already went back to the pole manufacturer with the existing poles that are there now to see if they could craft poles that look exactly the way the current poles look and will allow them to install their equip- equipment mostly in the interior of the pole. So the providers, I mean, the providers want these um small wireless facilities to populate throughout the community because that's how they have coverage and make money. So they're pretty well our experience has been that they've been very much willing to work with us. I I can't, I almost have to leave the way in future, but they have been. But, you know, I've been presenting not to make sure this is properly drafted, you know, make sure that all the things we're concerned about go into it.
Question about the waivers. Now that I've, now that I know how to work these hovering devices, is that a normal way to do things? We're just going to let you have whatever you ask for if you, where we determine this? There's no decision process? There's no evaluation?
I think the waiver section is going to need a little bit more tweaking because it's like, who's granting the waiver? What's the criteria? So I think there's some more work that needs to be, needs to go into that. And I can probably put some stuff together um to to kind of take a stab at if you want to look at the waiver adding a little bit more, some standards to what and how and whom.
When the applicant writes the ordinance, that's generally bad.
I think it's important to point out too that everything that they're talking about is to the design standards, which are not part of the ordinance. So
Or not, exactly.
Using the term waiver, but it's not the term waiver we think of. Um, that there, there's two separate documents. There's the, there's the ordinance amendment. And then there's design standards and they were intentionally drafted to be separate. So the change is applied to the design standards exclusive of the zoning permitting uses. Uh, one of the things that they also put in there was that they could go above fifty feet. The order limits them to fifty feet. And in the ordinance, you cannot go with a small cell system above fifty feet. Now, if it's a building or something else that's not small cell, they can go above fifty feet, but it's not an administrative review. That kicks it into conditional use. So I think we just need to be careful about what's in the ordinance and what's limiting it to what's on the design standards. And I think if it's in the design standards, it's then becomes a negotiating thing where they may come to you and say, this is in your design standards, but it meets, here's the reasons we think this will work better. It's not the same thing as if they, like we saw tonight, they need to apply for a waiver to the planning commission that goes to council as as a typical zoning uh waiver request. So there is differences here. And I think it in some cases it might work, but I don't, I don't think you should, but just take the changes they're suggesting. I think that the design standard could be asking them for more that's in there that works better and um, but I do think you should look at what they're asking for. And if it's not appropriate, I don't think they should go above fifty feet. If if that's the case, then there's a, that's a whole separate review process and there's reasons for that.
Right. And if something's at fifty feet, they are already allowed to go ten percent over that from federal regulations. So and that just, that's straight across the board for cell tele- telecommunications information, equipment. If you're at a certain height, you can already exceed it by, because I ran into this on other places. You had a tower at one hundred and fifty feet, but they were by federal regulations allowed to exceed it by ten percent. Um, just one time. So if we already have a tower at fifty feet, they can add, you know, I think another five feet to it, if I did my math right.
Just one time?
One time.
So here's my thing. So much work has been done on this ordinance. I would hate to have them undercut us by just coming in quickly and before it's, before the pending ordinance doctrine applies. I know the council is already overwhelmed with its September schedule. But on the other hand, I also want to make sure the public is comfortable. I just remember the last time we had a cell tower application, people were concerned about would they be harmed by emissions from the tower? And I think people need to know or or to have a an opportunity to ask questions about either the antennas or the boxes or the what whatever, to make sure that they're comfortable with what's happening to the city, because it's going to be all over the place. I mean, is there any way we can have this on the mayor and council's agenda as a draft that we're still working on? That would satisfy pending doctrine, pending ordinance doctrine?
So I think
And get it on the books, but not overburden mayor and council any more than they're already burdened. And then we we finish the final touches here.
Yes. Is there a schedule that kicks in when you start that?
So I think it's far enough along that you could refer it to um mayor and city council more in just a, as an update, we're working on this. Do you endorse us working on this in its present form? And we'd like you to refer it back to the planning commission. So at the next city council meeting, they can say planning commission's done a lot of work on this. They've got it far enough along that we think it's ready for introduction. We're going to refer it back down to the planning commission for some additional tweaking. So they, so I I wouldn't expect city council to actually, you know, spend any time talking or considering visions other than just say, we're moving forward with this.
Acknowledging it.
Yeah. And then I think that the pending ordinance doctrine kicks in.
Mm-hmm.
Because you've noticed it.
I don't know if anybody else feels the same way.
I I I I tend to agree with what Kay just said, but I guess the one thing I wonder about is, is there a schedule that kicks in that limits how long that can go on, that back and forth?
No.
Once you started up the
No, because all you're doing is introducing an ordinance. It's up to mayor and council to eventually schedule a public hearing and act on it. And I know I've worked in many places where you introduce an ordinance and it just sits there because it just falls off on off the priority list. So there's, I'm not aware of a timeframe. So if you guys need, the commission needs another month or two and then make your recommendation back to to council, then they can set the public hearing date. Sorry, Glenn.
So I just want, one general comment is that I'm more for everything we just discussed. Um, you know, we want to try to protect the historic nature or the aesthetics, but we also don't want to put up roadblocks. I mean, we're trying to move the United States into at least the twentieth century, if not the twenty-first century. We are so far behind on IT technology. And so, you know, we we need to get this moving forward and protect the interests of the city at the same time. But, you know, I for one do not want to unduly hamper the ability of five G into Lewis.
So just for
Glenn.
Understanding of where with that we go with this, is it primarily the questions or suggestions submitted by the provider that we should focus on and gather more information or are there additional issues um that commission members think we should look at before we bring it back to you?
I think it's the questions.
Tom, like I like I asked, you know, is there a way of creating some sort of a map, some sort of a way of visualizing the possibilities here? Sort of a density that could develop here of different networks, different poles, you know, a sort of a worst case scenario. I I'm just wondering for a best case, I'm just trying to get a sense of what this is going to look like across the city.
But I don't know that you could actually do that for how Lewis pans out. I I can probably get for you you the map that Rehoboth has put together based upon what's been requested so far. So we have a map in Rehoboth that shows where AT&amp;T is requesting, where Verizon has requested. So you can get a sense of how close they like to put these things. But I don't think they, I don't think we can bribe you anything that says here is where they will likely go in Lewis.
No, but that would be helpful to see what's going on in Rehoboth would be helpful.
Right. I can get that.
But I think the graphics that are part of the um the ordinance and the guidelines show you that, I mean, these antennas are not that obtrusive, especially when they're built into decorative poles. I mean, the whole idea is that they disappear. And I've been to many communities and took taking pictures where if you weren't even aware and absolutely looking for them, you wouldn't even know that they're there. wouldn't even know that they're there.
Let me ask a question of the commission. Is it possible for us to put the mayor and city council on notice that we have formulated a draft ordinance that is needing some additional, we believe some, basic framework meets the requirements, but we have some additional elements to perfect and would suggest that the mayor and city council schedule a public hearing in October on the draft ordinance, which gives us until at least the next meeting of the planning commission, the 16th of September, to finish our input on the ordinance? And then, having scheduled the public hearing in October, the mayor and city council have reserved time to address this.
I think that's a reasonable way to go.
Sounds good.
Well, we never, I can't recall, I'm not saying can't be done, I can't recall a time when the city council has set a public hearing on something that wasn't before it. In other words, if, if, if the draft ordinance doesn't come to city council in September or October, for that matter, I guess, we could reserve a date, yes, but that would require that it actually come to the city council at the city council's October meeting would be my guess, and then, you know, and then thereafter, there would be a, a public hearing.
Bonnie, Bonnie's question, should city planning do the public hearing first? Should city planning, planning commission have the public hearing, and then from that input, then forward it on to mayor and city council?
I believe, this is a Glenn question, but I believe the city council would still then have to have another public hearing.
It would, definitely.
I don't think that would solve it.
So, we actually have two parts. We have the design standards, which is what needs to be given another look at, because that's where the comments came from. The ordinance itself is ready to go. So, would it make sense to send the ordinance to council and then continue to work on the design standards and have them follow a month later notice, and, but with the pending doctrine going, hey, we've got design standards that are pretty much well set, we just need a little extra time?
I assume the design standards will be part of the ordinance?
No.
Oh, okay, well, that, then they won't need a public-
Think of one is, one, the ordinance is gonna actually become code, and the design standards are like a policy you have, that you'll have to look at and make sure.
Right, the reason why I ask is if, if it's not gonna be codified-
Yeah.
-you wouldn't need a public hearing for it, I would assume.
Right.
Correct.
So, we could march, I mean, to Kay's concern about the pending ordinance doctrine and getting something in place, you know, that, maybe that is the way to do it. If, if the two pieces of this can be effectively bifurcated, then maybe that's the way to do it.
That would be great.
If, 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 if it's simply policy and so on, what, what requirement is there, you know, what incentive is there for the providers to follow the design guidelines if they're not, in some way, codified?
The ordinance references, you have to follow the design standards. So, you know, the ordinance says there are design standards. The design standards just are not adopted in ordinance. It's a separate piece of paper that we decided, we considered, we expect since it's such new technology that things are gonna change quite rapidly, and instead of having to change the ordinance and codify in public hearings every time we need to amend the design standards, that we would just leave them as a separate document and have more flexibility to amend them as technology change.
How does it work with enforcement of those design guidelines, if any? Is there such a thing?
If you are coming in and you're doing a small cell, meaning 50 feet or less, and co-locating on an antenna, and it's with it, and it meets the guidelines, it's an administrative review. If it's in the state right of way, it's administrative no matter what, because as was mentioned before, federal and state laws reclude local, I mean, you had, do have some building code oversight of it, but the design guidelines really have an impact in areas outside the state right of way, that if providers are following those and they're in compliance with them, it's an administrative review. It says if it's not in compliance with it, it becomes a conditional use review. There, then it has, they have to go for a conditional use permit, and this is outside of the state right of way. You can attach what's reasonable conditions to it. So, there is different layers of review. Most of the providers are going to wanna go in the, in the right of way, and the design guidelines are more about reference. They also have to, since it's going on a BPW poll, it has to meet all of their requirements for co-locating on the poll. So, there's a number of steps that they need to go through, so the incentives are built into them following in the right of way and following the guidelines. If they don't do that, it becomes where there's public hearings held on each review, and, you know, there's different levels. So, there is an incentive built into it.
Yeah, the more you comply, the easier a process.
Well, is the sense of the commission that we can proceed on the bifurcated basis? I wasn't sure whether or not we had consensus on the ordinance while we spent a lot of time talking about design guidelines. I wasn't sure, Sumner in particular, whether the ordinance was sufficiently encompassing for your purposes.
I, I'm, I'm good with that. I, I, I think we can go, I'm happy to see this move forward and, and do as Janelle just suggested, send the ordinance to council and continue to work on, on some minor modifications to the design guidelines.
And I would still suggest that perhaps we need to ask council to schedule the hearing, certainly after our September meeting, because maybe we'll be able to complete our review of the design guidelines, because undoubtedly there'll be questions about those in the context of the public hearing by mayor and city council, even though it's on the ordinance since they're referenced.
I have a question, oops, sorry, that's the cat. But I do have a question about that. If the ordinance is the only thing that needs a public hearing, then if the commission votes to forward the, the ordinance language alone to council, it would be on council's September agenda, we'd set the hearing, and on we'd go. I don't, if I understand it correctly, the design guidance would not require a public hearing, and so it's not on the same, it doesn't have the same procedural-
I'm not suggesting that it does, but I'm suggesting there undoubtedly be questions about the design guidelines that'll come to mayor and city council. And whether you want to handle that ad hoc or, or be prepared with the, with our recommended version of the design guidelines before you have a public hearing, that's your choice.
Well, or do you, does, does, does the commission want to handle the public input on the design standards? I mean, where do you, where does that properly lie?
I think, I think it could be either, but, you know, ultimately, when city council adopts the ordinance, I would hope that the design guidelines are pretty well flushed out, because you're basically incorporating them by referencing the ordinance. So, I would, I'd hope that they are, you know, pretty well finalized by the time we get to a public hearing, certainly by the time city council adopts the ordinance.
Well, does that suggest then that it makes more sense for these two things to be going from a time perspective on, on parallel paths with the city council getting the ordinance, setting the public hearing, hopefully adopting or moving forward with it one way or the other in October, and the commission, in the meantime, working to finalize the design standards, so those two would be ready by the October meeting?
Yes, I think that makes sense.
The question I would have is, and Bonnie, this is to you, I, I'm not sure if you just read the ordinance, I'm not sure that your fellow council people aren't gonna have more questions than answers at this point. I guess there's so much in the design guidelines which amplifies and explains what's in the ordinance. I certainly, if you just handed me the ordinance without the guidelines, would have a ton of questions.
Well, you may well be right, but let me then turn this back over to the commission, in which case, well, in which case, does it make sense to decouple them, which was kind of my question about the bifurcation? But let me, if, if there is, let me ask a question, if there's a delay in adoption of the ordinance, what is the real world effect of that?
Nothing. I think, I think once you have it noticed, even if you set the public hearing and then need to extend the public hearing to another, I mean, not conduct it because you're not ready and you set a new date, once it's introduced for a public hearing, I think the pending ordinance doctrine kicks in and you're, and you're covered regardless of how long it takes you to actually get to the public hearing and adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
Well, why can't-
I'm sorry, one of the original suggestions was to send both of them to mayor and city council for their information and have them remanded back to planning commission. Is maybe that not the cleanest way? Because that would handle the pending ordinance doctrine and allow some time to get the final documents to mayor and city council so that they had, were more comfortable with what was going on?
Yeah, I think that was Kay's suggestion, and I-
I lost track.
-got it back up, yeah.
It also seems to me, though, that the, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, because I'm getting muted signals coming up. The other side of the coin would be, mayor and city council could set the hearing on the public ordinance. That doesn't mean that they necessarily have to at their next meeting take up the passage of the, of the ordinance as opposed to the design guidelines. So, you could have a referral of the ordinance, set a public hearing on that. The design guidelines, hopefully, optimistically, could come back to you on September, after September 16th. You don't have a public hearing on the design guidelines, but by the time you have the hearing in October, you would have them in final form, recommended form from the commission, and then have your hearing on the ordinance, and everybody is up to snuff. But that doesn't mean after you have the hearing on the ordinance, there's a timeline when you have to have the decision made, the vote by the mayor and city council. So, if there's something that comes up, you have additional time at that point. I'm just, I think we need, I think we need to move along as quickly as possible, and I think the, we're, we're trying to balance too many things. If we try and dot all the i's and t's before we get it to you, it's gonna be November, December before there's early, the earliest action the mayor and city council are gonna take, and I think that's problematic.
But what I, but what I'm hearing is that the, the city council really can't take action on the ordinance until the design standards are, are ready because of the interplay between the two.
And I'm suggesting if you set a hearing at your first meeting in, in September, the mayor and city council meeting, you'll have the design guidelines two weeks later. Will be done by September 16th with our recommendations, and then it's in your, it's yours to do as you wish, it's not part of a public hearing, which you would have set in October on the ordinance.
Because what I'm getting, from what I'm hearing, we're close to the, the ordinance is ready to go, but we're close to the design standards, we just need to look a little bit deeper and hash them out a little bit longer. But I think that's what I, that's the feeling I'm getting, is we're, we're really close with the design guidelines. We just want, they want to discuss them a little bit farther, and then, in the meantime, we, we, they don't want to hold anything up and get it going to, to council, and by the time the ordinance gets introduced, you'll introduce it, commission's still working it out, and by the time you get to your public hearing for the ordinance, you'll have the recommendation of the guidelines from the commission, because it sounds like they just need one more meeting to work out the guidelines.
And isn't it likely that once that hearing happens, there's gonna be a number of possible further edits to at least the design guidelines?
Yeah, we could get more public comments and other things that could come out at the public hearing, because that's what the public hearing's for.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of moving parts to this. It's, it's the city and it's BPW, and I think it would, this would be one that we would anticipate a lot of suggestions or comments from the public, from stakeholders, and from council who really haven't weighed in on this yet. So, I think it, one way or another, to hear back from them before we fine tune too much, this, this almost seems like one that there would be changes to it, either at the council level or coming back, and it would be good to hear that so that we can adapt to that as quick, as quickly as we can.
So, Bonnie, as our liaison, what is your recommendation, how we should proceed? Whether we bifurcate it, whether we bring it back just informationally in front of you? How do you suggest, what's the best way to get this considered?
Let me ask one specific question, which I, I'm not sure I understand the answer to yet. And I guess this is a functional question, so it really goes to Tom and Janelle, I think. Because the reason that we're trying to get the, the ordinance pushed ahead is so that there are gonna be a public hearing scheduled, but what, and pushing the ordinance ahead also seems to be tied to having the pending ordinance doctrine attached. So, I just have one quick question, which is, what, what in, what is the real world need for the public ordinance, pending ordinance doctrine to attach? Is there, is there something that's about to happen that we need the ordinance in place even though it's not modified by the design standards? I'm just trying to, before we start kind of creating our own procedural morass here with half of it coming forward, but not the other half, and a, you know, a public hearing be scheduled that may or may not stick as a date, I'm still, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand why the, why, the need to take the two things, to separate the two pieces of it.
So, my, go ahead, Glenn.
I was just gonna say, I guess if we knew that there were five applications for Second Street coming in, you know, in three weeks, then we'd be scurrying to get it done, but I don't know of anything like that that's out there.
Yeah, I'm not aware of anything.
So, so with that said, then it sounds like the pending ordinance doctrine piece of it is not, is not crucial at this point. So, the issue then is whether or not, if I understand it right, so then, the issue then is whether to disaggregate these two things in order to get an earlier public hearing scheduled.
Well, actually, I thought the pub, the pending doctrine ordinance, pending ordinance doctrine was the whole thing, because last year, it was two years away, and now they're measuring in Rehoboth. So-
Right.
-I just don't want the city and the citizens to suffer because we missed out. I just want to do whatever it takes to get it on the books, realizing that you guys already have a full slate, and then we can perfect the design standards and then get that to you.
Well, how about if we just simplify this? I mean, if, if, if we, if we don't know of any times, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, Kay, but if we don't know of any rush to do this or to come into Lewis itself, could this, could the city council just put something on its agenda to set a hearing, a public hearing, after we receive the full packet of recommendations from, from the planning commission? I mean, do we have, so the question is, do we have to actually have something from the planning commission before we set a public hearing date, if that's the concern here?
You could, we could, if, whatever that takes, if that's enough, that would be great, and we certainly have in hand the materials that we have, so it's not like we just started writing it. I mean, Tom in particular has been working on this forever, so-
Yeah, yeah, I know.
It shows that it physically exists.
Right, what I'm concerned about is in, is trying to streamline this, so we don't create more confusion at council where we have an ordinance that doesn't really tell you the whole story without the design guidelines, and the design guidelines are coming later. So, I, my question, I guess, Glenn, can't city council just set a hearing even though it doesn't have the, the material before it yet from the planning commission?
So, I don't, I don't know that there needs to be a formal, you know, set and vote of the planning commission to send it up to city council for that purpose. I think, you know, you, you as the liaison can ask the city manager to place it on the agenda-
Right.
-and embed the materials as they presently exist in the, in the agenda materials, and city council could, yes, set that-
Yeah, I mean, as long as the materials are, are posted in accordance with FOIA-
Right.
We could always-
Yeah, they can change.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can always set the date. So, does that, I mean, now my question's back to Cat, to the commission, does that action by council address your concerns about getting a, a public hearing date on, on the calendar as soon as possible after, in this, in this scenario, the, the full package comes forward? scenario, the, the full package comes forward from the planning commission with the ordinance and the explanatory design guidelines?
I think that sounds great. Then it accomplishes that of everybody's goals without overwhelming you guys.
Well, we're easily overwhelmed.
I, I, I think it's, I think it's important to get the pending ordinance doctrine enforced because BPW had received last fall requests for small cell out on the beach area to
There you go.
um, spots that were lacking in coverage. So I don't know where that wound up, because obviously, part of that was based on um, the amount of people who come during the summertime. And I'm not sure, I haven't paid attention, whether those applications are still there. But there was interest from, uh, I think it was Sprint and AT&T back then at putting in small cell.
Yeah, but that was what easily, you know, how many months ago? I mean, almost a year ago.
Right.
Yeah, I think that was coming from like a third party. They were just trying to kind of like reserve the area and then they could lease that to the
Oh, they were trying to stake out their claim, huh?
Right. I think that's what it was, from what I've heard. Um, but it sounds like if the commission, from what um, councilwoman Osler has said, is if com- commission's still working on it, but she wants to take it to council and put it on the September agenda just for like an introduction and then set a public hearing date, that the commission still has plenty of time um, to make their changes, what I, I expect to be done in September. So I think, and then the minute it's introduced in September, it, you know, it, the pending ordinance doctrine isn't in place.
Fantastic.
Okay.
So do we even need a motion here? Or is this just something Bonnie takes to council?
I think my, I think the council person can just take it to council at this point, unless she wants some authorization from the commission to do so.
Or, or you don't have to vote on it, but just a consensus that that's what you want me to do. I'm happy to take it forward.
Right. Does anybody take
I think it's a great idea.
Yes, thank you.
Take it and run.
Okay, my job here is done. I'll see you guys soon.
I know the feeling.
Welcome back, Bonnie.
Next item?
All right, we're ready to move on then to paragraph, section D, reports by city solicitor, liaisons, planners, commissioners, and the three subcommittees. I'm going to start with the subcommittees. Our sea level rise subcommittee, Tom Panetta.
So I think as we discussed earlier on, um, we've pretty much completed a draft for both the infrastructure and the redevelopment. And the next phase we're going to move on to is major subdevelopments. Um, I think we need to make a decision next week if we move the two portions we've got done um, to planning commission and set a hearing for those, or um, which way to go. And the other aspect is, um, we're talking about putting together a sea level rise workshop, you know, similar to what Kay had done for the water workshop last year and what's being talked about for the resilient community. And um, you know, I'm going to work with Janelle on setting up attendees for that. I've already been in contact with um, Mike Powell from Denrec and Danielle Swallow to get some input from them. So um, we'll, we'll, we'll work with Janelle to find when that fits in from a timeframe. But I think it's important, given how complex this issue is, to get a workshop and allow to skip public comment on that. Do you know, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
No, I, we're going to, I know you were talking about doing that in the fall. Um, the fall is now getting really busy. Um, because hopefully we'll be working, having meeting with the commission, council, and mitigation team in October. So finding when we want to start meeting with the other group for that workshop and we'll just work that through.
Well, I figure once, once summer is over and we're all locked in, we'll have plenty of time to do the stuff.
The um, the, the workshop that you're talking about, Tom, as we've discussed, is really slightly different focus than some of the previous ones, because it's my hope that this water workshop three could be subtitled solutions, where we're bringing in people to talk about some of the alternatives or additional steps we could take to protect against sea level rise, different in a part from just describing the phenomenon of sea level rise, to get more specific about some of the changes or some of the problems that we need to be looking at now, somewhat along the lines of Sumner's earlier questions about, are we talking about 10, 25, 100 years? Really, what are we talking about in terms of some mechanisms to protect against sea level rise, about which we don't have all the details, but about which we know is inevitable? So
Drew, I'm glad you brought that up, because Denrec, Mike Powell specifically said, you know, he did not want to talk about it in isolation of just sea level rise, but the interplay with flooding and the other aspects of resiliency. So um, it would be, from a workshop perspective, more than just what we're focusing on right now.
So this is, can, is there a way to combine this with this resiliency thing that, that I think Kay said something about October 1st? I mean, is there a way to put these two together?
Well, that once, that's intended just sort of like an internal one with, it's, it's a much more low key um, reach. It's just meant to be planning commission and mitigation planning and the public.
Oh, sorry. I missed that part. Okay, okay.
That's right. And, and my computer is about to conk out, so I'm afraid I'm going to have to go. Does that mess up the quorum? Or are we okay?
No, we're okay.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Bye, Kay.
Sorry. Thanks, Kay, for all your help.
Absolutely.
All right. And I, Janelle and Tom both, um, you know, we don't necessarily have to have another day for the workshop. Depending on our workload is, we could conduct the workshop at a regularly scheduled meeting in November, for example. So I think we need to just examine really what's coming in the pipeline and when time's available. But I do think to Sumner's question, it's building on all the work that everybody's done in the subcommittees, plus the resiliency material that Janelle's collated and that Kay's been working on. And one of the next steps is to look at a more broadly based approach to solving some of these problems. And um, I, I think we need to do that sooner than later, uh, because there will be a lot of fallout of additional work and efforts that will come from that. And we will be asking people to step up and take on some of those new areas that um, we know have to be addressed, but now hopefully have some framework in which they can be addressed. So basically, it's to be determined. We'll wait to hear back from the subcommittee's recommendation. Um, work with Janelle and others to pull this, organize this a little bit, and we'll look for an update next month. Fair enough, Tom?
Yes.
All right. Wetlands buffer chair. Sorry?
And we have a subcommittee meeting next week for anyone who doesn't have anything to do.
All right, that's, that's Zoom as well?
Yes.
Okay. And Wetlands buffer, I think we've handled that with the effort under C1. Flood plane, unfortunately, chair is gone, but we know we're doing that, bringing it back. Glenn, do you have any other comments for us?
I don't have anything new, Mr. Chair.
All right. Uh, I know Anne Marie was on phone or whatever earlier. The, Janelle, did she ask anything else be brought up?
Nope, she was good.
Do you have anything else for us?
No, I'm good.
Tom? Jim, Tom West, do you have anything else?
No, yeah, thank you.
Uh, Joe, in your role as liaison, do you have anything else to report to us on H Park?
Uh, H Park had concerns about the, the wireless towers, the location, and we expressed those to Tom and Janelle at our last meeting. So they're aware.
Right. Thank you, Joe. Any other commissioner have any general information they wanted to share? Okay, can we go on to the minutes then? Hearing none. Under E1, consideration approval of the July 15 meeting minutes. I have a couple of corrections myself. Um, in the meeting, uh, the, the regular meeting of the commission minutes, um, on page two, there is, under action, a vote missing. Under C1, the first vote taken on that was, was um, missed my vote somehow. My vote was the negative. It wasn't reflected in the minutes. So there was an, it was a no vote. On the minutes for the, what's labeled uh, LPC PH, it describes the Lewis Planning Commission Public Hearing Meeting. Uh, we need to take the word hearing out. Glenn wants us not to be using the word hearing because it's just a meeting. It's not a formal hearing required. So in the heading, or anyplace else it appears on those other minutes, we should take out the word hearing as describing that meeting. Are there any other corrections or additions to either set of minutes? And Jackie, if you didn't get what I was saying, give me a holler and I'll be happy to help you figure it out. Anybody else have any comments, question, and that's not going to have a motion to approve both sets of minutes as amended?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Raise your hand is all we need. John, nearby, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
John nearby moves, Joe seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. A lot of work went into this. Appreciate everybody's time and effort, and we'll look forward to talking again soon. Stay safe.
Thank you, guys.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Yeah.